I'm sure he's there. The person running the...
Yeah.
He is. And I just walked in. Okay, thank you. We good to go? Thank you. At the hour of 1 o'clock having arrived, Santa Cruz City Council will come to order, and the clerk, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Triguero.
Present.
Brunner.
Present.
Councilmember Newsom is absent today. Councilmember O'Hara.
Here.
Councilmember Golda.
You're too.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson.
Present.
And Mayor Keeley.
Quorum having been established. Statement of disqualifications. Any member have a statement of disqualification? Any items on there? Councilmember Golda. Oh, I thought you were...
No, I was saying no.
I say, okay. Excuse me on that. Very good. Thank you. Public comment on our closed session. This will be the opportunity for anyone who's with us in chambers or on our... online, who may wish to comment on our closed session. Closed session is conference with legal counsel. There are four claims. And there is a conference regarding existing litigation with California Grocers Association, another litigation regarding anticipated litigation potentially, and a public employment issues that we will discuss with the public... excuse me, with the city attorney. Anyone with us in chambers wish to comment on any of those items? Ms. Bush, do we have anyone online who may wish to comment?
We do have someone online, but their hand is not up, so I don't think they wish to speak.
Okay, very good. Then it appears we have no one else in chambers, no one else online. We will stand adjourned into closed session. We will come out of closed session. For those of you that want to know when will we be in regular session, we will not be here earlier than 2:30 PM. That is the earliest we will be here. If we adjourn earlier from closed session, we will not resume until 2:30. If we go longer than 2:30, so be it. We stand adjourned into closed session. The hour of 2:30 having arrived, the city council is finished with its work in closed session. The clerk will call the roll to establish quorum.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Triguero.
Present.
Brunner.
Present.
Councilmember Newsom is absent. Councilmember Golda.
Oh, I'm here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Keeley.
Present.
Quorum having been established, this is the opportunity for oral communication. This will be the opportunity for anyone to address the city council on a matter under our jurisdiction, not on today's agenda for a period of time not to exceed two minutes. In the event that we have not only people here in council, but folks online, we'll toggle back and forth between folks present and folks online. We'll take the first person in line. Good afternoon, and welcome to the city council meeting.
Hi, my name is Amy Chen Mills. I think you know me. I'm with Get the Flock Out. Just more updates, news about the Flock system and the ALPR system. The California Democratic Party has now resolved that this data should not be shared with federal agencies. I'm not sure if that's going to help at all. And the money should be used for community crime prevention programs instead of these mass surveillance cameras. Flock admitted it was sharing data against state laws with Customs and Border Patrol. Then 404 Media reported that Customs and Border Patrol had access to 80,000 Flock cameras nationwide, and that Flock gave them direct access. That means bypassing police departments. That article is here in 404 Media. I suggest you subscribe to 404 Media. A local resident who's a security data expert has sent a letter to our city attorney saying that Flock is operating in the state of California without a license and without certification to run an alarm, basically alarm security operation with its cameras. So that puts the city in a state of legal jeopardy, as well as all the other legal jeopardy the city is now in because of all the violations of state law by Flock and by state police departments. According to journalists at Wired and elsewhere, Palantir, owned by Peter Thiel or founded by Peter Thiel, is creating a mass surveillance state across the nation in conjunction with Doge and ICE. City council, you are our firewall. You should be protecting us against this kind of mass surveillance and our immigrant community, which is already terrified of what is happening to them at this time. So I encourage you to pause once again. The... We want to take these cameras down, but if you could at least for the time being pause the contract as the city of Denver has done, and pause the 14 extra cameras that the city is now trying to install. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online with their hand up? We'll take the next person online, and then we'll take the next person in line. Thank you. Person online, good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Yes, hello, this is Garrett. Hey, first I'd like to mention briefly, I filed all the forms for an argument against the mayor's Measure C fake citizen socialist housing initiative, but my health was in serious, almost grave decline in July, August, and unfortunately, I had surgery on the day of the deadline to file an in-person wet signature, so that didn't happen. Anyway, let me know. Someone sure did try to submit an argument against Measure C. And I'm a little better now, if that matters. Otherwise, that QR code used to vote on art samples for the Bethany Creek Culvert Art requires a cellphone accepting third-party pop-ups, which leaves some people voteless. Again, I would say it is unprincipled and a violation of the public fiduciary trust to use water enterprise funds for anything other than water delivery. And your excuse is that the artwork is educational. However, having looked at the art samples, there's nothing educational about those. Now, it seems we already had some air quote "art" drawn on the culvert, some big two-foot graffiti words, "Sir" and "X3". Now "Sir" is gang tag shorthand for the Serales, or Southern United Rosa Gang, and "X3" presents affiliation with the Mexican mafia. We see these around town, like Garfield Park, and it seems that you are planning on putting some very expensive artwork on their marked territory. One wonders for how long that art's going to remain untouched. As to my educational art ideas for the culvert art, have you considered showing water ratepayers' wallets being forcibly opened and cash with wings flying out like butterflies coming to rest neatly as tiles along the rest of the walls, with say replica $100 bill tiles? Anyway, another idea I had was showing people flushing toilets and following the effluent to the sewer recycling plant, then along with dollars being pumped over to the Bell's Wells, then pump back up again with dollar signs over to the water treatment plant, finally transported to someone's faucet where they're enjoying a full glass of recycled water with a couple hundred million dollar price tag affixed to it. Now, those ideas would be educational. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm not up here for a reason you guys think I would be. I'm here to talk about Segment 9 of the rail trail. When you guys, at one of the meetings that Public Works put together, they had the different projects they were doing, different tables, I talked to the guys on the rail trail, Segment 9. So I said, "Are you guys going to do this all in one shot?" And they said, "Yes." I go, "Have you thought about doing it in segments? San Lorenzo to Seabright? Seabright to 7th? 7th to 17th?" No, we haven't thought about that. Contractors don't bid that way. My suggestion to you guys is instead of having that entire corridor being worked on all at the same time, that you do it in segments. So you can be proud in how you open the first segment, right? From San Lorenzo to Seabright. And then, once you finish the next segment, from Seabright to 7th, you open that one. And then you do the next one all along, instead of having the whole thing closed for two-plus years, like I think you guys did on the west side. It might be a little more advantageous if we do it, break it up into sections. I realize Public Works goes, "Well, we've never thought about that", as what the gentleman told me. Maybe you guys could think about doing that. I want to get a jump on that project, since the projects that I've been affected by have great effect on me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else online? Good afternoon, welcome. Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, city council. My name's Bruce Thomas, and I'm here to raise an issue concerning amenity spaces that the city council should address. Specifically, I want to call attention to a deception that's going on, one that the city is complicit in. New projects that contain future ADUs in the guise of amenity spaces are not providing truthful assessments of the impacts they will have. This happens when the city approves a project based on the declared number of units, but then allows developers to convert amenity spaces to ADUs by ministerial approval. In the case of the Clock Tower project, traffic impacts and the size of certain waivers were assessed based on 178 units, when in fact, the project is likely to have over 220 units after many of these spaces are converted to ADUs. The city should require developers to provide updated impact assessments if the plans they submit to the building department have more units than the number approved during the project design review. And these updated impact assessments should be made public so that the community can have truthful assessment of the impact of the new development. This is a matter of being open, honest, and transparent with the community. And something I hope the city council will address. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Kim Hill, and I am here to discuss Arana Gulch. I reside on Mantle Avenue at the Agnes Street entrance into the gulch. Today, I'm here to speak on behalf of the neighbors on my street, as well as the neighbors on South Park, Forest, Hagman, Harbor Drive, and 7th Avenue. Our concerns are about the ongoing illegal activity and severe fire risks that pose in the gulch due to the homeless encampments. This has been an ongoing issue for years. Arana Gulch is an open space with a large amount of sensitive habitat that is protected by the Coastal Commission and the fishing game. Heavy underbrush offers seclusion for illegal activity and homeless encampments in that area. Recently, we have witnessed significant altercations of the habitat with chainsaws, chain link fencing, and padded locked gates that were set in concrete, terracing of the land to build the encampments. There's a continuous presence of trash, human waste, and drug paraphernalia scattered on the ground and entering the creeks. Not so long ago, there was a raid and seizure of $30,000 worth of drugs and stolen property. But the most important issue at hand for all of us that live around this beautiful area is a potential for fire risk. With Murray Street Bridge being constructed and the sporadic construction and ling closure on SoCal Avenue, it's constantly backed up, and that's our only way out if there's a fire. We feel it's imperative that the city take immediate measures to clean up the encampments, which pose the fire risks for all of us that surround the open space. Many of our neighbors have come together to discuss solutions to stop the encampments and illegal activity. We recently talked to the Coastal Commission with Ellie Oliver, and the possibility... Anyways, we would really...
Take a couple more seconds.
Okay, thank you. And the possibility of clearing the underbrush and the areas where the encampments are, and installing interpretive trails for the public to use. Ellie informed us that the Coastal Commission would be open to this happening, but the city council would have to initiate it and contact the Coastal Commission. We've also been in contact with Santa Cruz Mountain Trail stewards, and they'd be eager to help. So, please help us.
Thank you so much for being here today. I think we have somebody online, so we'll be with you in just a moment. Person online, good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Sadie Rose. I was born and raised in Santa Cruz, and my parents still live in our family home in Lower Ocean neighborhood. If these procedures are already underway, I apologize. I was unable to confirm them in my research, and I raised this only to ensure that the city and its residents are fully protected. I appreciate our status as a sanctuary city for the last 40 years, and the department's readherence to the policy since 2017. The police department. I am here because noncompliance alone is not enough. Without training in clear procedures, residents who call 911 remain vulnerable to unlawful detention, and the city remains exposed. In Delong versus Erie County, New York Court Appeals, 1983, the court held that once a city provides 911, it owes a special duty to callers. That duty applies equally to residents, tourists, citizens, and non-citizens. The Fourth Amendment, as affirmed in Gro versus Ramirez, United States Supreme Court, 2004, requires warrants to be signed by a federal judge and to particularly describe the person and the place. ICE forms I-200 and I-205 are administrative, signed only by ICE officers. They are not judicial warrants. They provide ICE with internal authority, but they confer no constitutional protection to residents. In City of Canton versus Harris, United States Supreme Court, 1989, the court held that municipalities are liable under Title 240 of... sorry, Title 42 of the United States Code, Section 19... 8.3, for failure to train when the risk is obvious. The risk is obvious here. According to the Government Accountability Office, between 2015 and 2020, ICE arrested 674 people who turned out to be United States citizens. 121 were detained, and 70 were mistakenly deported from America. These individuals included disabled and developmentally disabled people, which hindered their ability to assert their citizenship status at the time. It is also foreseeable that residents in the... Sorry. Can I get like 20 more seconds?
Take five more seconds.
Okay. It's also foreseeable that residents in the current climate will be too afraid to open the door until a deputy is present to confirm that paperwork is lawful. That fear is legitimate. When callers ask for protection through 911... Sorry?
I say, "Thank you very much. We appreciate it." Thank you. Next person in line, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Joy Leclair, and I have the privilege of living on Arana Gulch. And it's a fabulous place, if you haven't been there. For all kinds of nature. Recently, I was watching a heron looking for gophers, and it caught one, and then a red-tailed hawk swooped down and stole it. More often, I see children feeding the cows. There were four babies born there this year, so sweet. And my big concern, besides the waste going directly into the harbor, is fires. And there have been many over the years, and they've all been in the daytime, thank goodness. So I worry that at nighttime, one won't be seen, and it'll travel right into my yard. And there are a lot of neighborhoods that back up onto the gulch. I see your concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here today. Do we have anyone online? Next person in line, good afternoon, welcome.
My name's Rebecca Lundberg, and I also live right across the street from Arana Gulch on the corner of South Park and Agnes. I second everything that Kim Hill so graciously spoke about. I just want to remind you, out of sight, out of mind, is what we feel is going on with the city of Santa Cruz. You've forgotten about us. We hear about action at Pogonip on the rich side of town. Sorry, but that's how I feel. We need rangers. We need the Arana Gulch patrolled. It gets very noisy some nights when the homeless people are screaming and fighting and throwing things. I woke up this morning to a guy with his truck and his tent set right behind it on the street at the entrance to the gulch. I don't think that's legal. We had a fabulous ranger, John Roskali, and he had all kinds of great ideas and was highly skilled at his job. And then you eliminated the ranger section of the city government. That's a great loss, and that's unfortunate, because it is important, and it's also important that you hear our words with regards to Arana Gulch. We don't feel safe. The homeless encampments are out of control. They have been for years. And we would very much appreciate your attention to this matter. Don't ignore us anymore, because we'll get louder and louder and louder. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone online? Next person in line, good afternoon, sir, welcome.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for that compliment. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you today. My name is John Roskelly. I am one of your park rangers up at Lockwood. At least, I think I am. I only say that because after being hospitalized and having to go on medical leave due to unchecked workplace bullying from a superior, I have no idea what my actual status is with the city right now. For the sake of brevity, I will spare details and dates, but in a nutshell, here it is. After years of bullying by a superior who had authority over me, it finally came to head about two years ago. I complained to my immediate supervisor, who did little or nothing, as nothing changed. I then complained to his supervisor, also did little or nothing. After no resolution, the problem only got worse. More than once I was hospitalized for several days. This was over a year ago. No pay, no work credit, but even more concerning was the lack of any substantive action. After not hearing back from the city for five months, we had a meeting. I pointed out that city's actions, to that point, were not according to our training nor our state and federal requirements for the issues at hand. The only response was a terse and terrible and inaccurate bit of gaslighting from Sarah at HR. But after that, which I believe was back in December, I have not heard anything back from the city. Curiously enough, a day or two after my email, which I included the city manager on, a third-party investigation been opened over two years after my first complaint, five to six months after my most recent hospitalization, and that was eight months ago. The only thing that I've heard from the city since was a requirement for a certification I would need by a deadline of August 19th. I reposed it by asking about the investigation. Again, nothing but crickets. Some of you may know me or heard of my creative and dedicated work I've done for the city. I'm well-liked by many of those... I've worked with colleagues in pubs, various... or even earned Employee of the Month with the police department. All I wanted to do was to put in 10 years of the city, retire with dignity and appreciation, to bask in the glow of being able to look back on my last job and say, "Job well done."
Thank you so much for being here.
Now I don't have that, it's been robbed of me.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, and welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Dave Dorsal, and I'd like to talk about ending discrimination against people in polyamorous relationships and who are involved in other types of consensual non-monogamy. Best estimate is there about 6,000 or 7,000 polyamorous people here in Santa Cruz right now, living here. As the laws are right now, if you are polyamorous and your employer finds out about it, they can fire you. If you're polyamorous and your landlord finds out about it, they can evict you. No legal recourse. There are all sorts of laws which prevent discrimination based on sexual orientation, and race, and religion, and ethnicity, gender identity, and marital status. But the courts have always ruled, whenever this has come up, that none of those laws protect people who are polyamorous. They just do not apply. So we'd like to change that. We have so far passed seven laws that prevent discrimination against polyamorous people. Five of them are in New England. They're all kind of right around where Harvard University is, that area, that part of Massachusetts. And there are... There's been one that's passed in Oakland last spring, and another one that just passed in Berkeley at the end of the year. And we'd like to pass a law like that here in Santa Cruz. So if there is anybody on this council or anyone else who wants to talk to me about it, I'll be here till the end of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone online? Good afternoon, sir, welcome.
Good afternoon. It's been five years since the CZU fire. I remember my 50th birthday. My birthday was two days ago. My 50th birthday was across the street in the Red Cross Shelter at the Civic. One thing I've come here and complained about before is all of the deadwood that is above campus. Now, there's kind of a triple overlap in passing the buck up there. It's the university's problem, it's the city's problem, it's the county's problem. No, it's everybody's problem. There were a conflagration up there today, this moment. It could have pretty severe consequences. They have one fire department that's right there, but they couldn't handle it, probably because of all of the... all of the uncleared deadwood from all of the forested areas above campus. Susie's District. You know, if I were to follow up with anybody, I perhaps would be asking you about that. And then, hopefully, I feel like you could get volunteers. It'd be kind of a teachable thing, you know? Okay, what you're doing is for safety and for ecological reasons. And you know, there's all kinds of benefits to it, and get students to volunteer when they come back in the fall. You just have to do what the state parks do, which is they make like a teepee-shaped kind of a stack of the wood, and then at appropriate time, when the weather's cooperating and when it's safe, they then light it, and the bonfire burns, and all that wood is gone. So that's my recommendation, that they pursue something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, welcome.
My name is Moody Tavoyt, and I've been living on 110 South Parkway, right by Arana Gulch Park, since 1995. Since then, we've been observing an influx of homeless people coming through the alleyway behind our house, invading the park through a broken-down fence that has never gotten fixed. They carry bikes and bags, and I even saw a gas tank. They sometimes look at us with sort of a crazed look on their face and often talk to themselves or yell. Also, a minivan has recently been parking behind our house with junk scattered around, and the people were sleeping in it. At times, things have disappeared from behind our house, and we also had a break-in a few years ago. Things were stolen, and we found paraphernalia of drug use in our living room and bedroom. My biggest concern is the fire danger this all poses. And as Arana Gulch is not visible from many places in Santa Cruz, a fire in the middle of the night might not be discovered soon enough. The amount of homeless traffic has definitely waxed and waned with the periodic cleanup that has happened, but I hope we can reduce the fire dangers through keeping the homeless out of the park altogether. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Online? Good afternoon. Mr. Ewing.
Thank you, Mr. Keeley. Yeah, my name is usually the unidentified person, but James Ewing Whitman. You know, I'm reminded how many step meetings I went on the top of Arana Gulch. I've ridden my bike there dozens of times and hiked it and seen many beautiful sunrises and sunsets. Since that device that's supposed to be recording me has at least 30 gigabytes, I plan on doing some extensive videos to see what's actually going on. I've probably crossed that bridge 10 times since I last stood in this room, mostly at night. Anyway, as I was riding my bike here, I saw something with my own eyes that in some ways reminded me of what my late friend, Robert Whalen, described when he had larger equipment. He'd go down and just clear acres of fruit trees and get truckloads of tires, diesel, just burn silicon, graphene oxide valley, when it was all fruit trees and stuff. Kind of reminds me, when I see the destruction and stuff. My son, by the age of six, was pretty good with video games and stuff, but he could actually drive an older backhoe, Extendo-hoe, and then one that was newer, like 20 years old, that was three times as efficient, but it wasn't really as good as the old one. I feel that a modern backhoe is about 6,000 times the power of a normal human being. Now, I kind of described a little joke about Ents. So if my 50-pound son, who could use a backhoe no problem, and was 48,000 times stronger than him, him, and Ent is 6,000 times as strong as a human, no, 1.25 million times as strong as a human, it could be walking through this town, completely smash this room with one step. I don't know. I don't mean to be dramatic, but it's just story. You know, the metric. I, oh, regionalism and non-law governments are destroying the United States. Thank you so much, Mr. Keely.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone online? We are on item five, a mayoral proclamation declaring August 9th, 2025 as Rotary Club of Santa Cruz Day, and I am going to ask Councilmember Trigaro to make this presentation. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so happy to share this. Whereas in 1905, Rotary International was founded as the world's first service club organization, now compromising over 1.4 million members around the globe, all dedicated to the motto "Service Above Self." And whereas in 1985, the Rotary Club of Santa Cruz Sunrise was chartered and has since made a lasting and deeply meaningful impact on the Santa Cruz community through its commitment to service, leadership development, and philanthropic action. And whereas for 40 years, the Rotary Club of Santa Cruz Sunrise has supported numerous local and international initiatives, including youth scholarships, community health projects, local aid, and environmental stewardship, which have improved the lives and uplifted the spirit of the community here, but also reflecting the values and goals of Rotary International in both action and purpose. And whereas the Rotary Club of Santa Cruz Sunrise's signature events, including the Sunrise Rotary Ride, also known as John and Ken's Most Excellent Adventure, and the July 4th Firecracker Race, have raised substantial funds for local nonprofits and community organizations while also building camaraderie and amazing public engagement. And whereas the city of Santa Cruz recognizes and celebrates the exemplary service, leadership, and dedication demonstrated by the Rotary Club of Santa Cruz Sunrise over the past four decades, now therefore I, Gabriela Trigaro, along with Mayor Fred Keely and my colleagues on council, do hereby proclaim August 9th, 2025 as Rotary Club of Santa Cruz Sunrise Day in the city of Santa Cruz, and we encourage all citizens to join in recognizing and celebrating the 40 years of continued service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price? Is Mr. Price here? Mr. Price, come on forward, and the council member would like to make this presentation to you, and we'd love to hear a few words from you as well. Good afternoon, sir. Mr. Trigaro? Mr. Price, microphone, George.
Mayor Keely, Councilwoman Trigaro, and the council of Santa Cruz, thank you so much for this honor. We appreciate it. I think the proclamation said a lot and stole a lot of words from me, but we are proud leaders and business people and friends in the Santa Cruz community, and we are dedicated to this, the Rotary motto "Service Above Self." We live by that credo, and we are focused in many different areas, including promoting peace, serving our communities, saving women and children, promoting safe water and hygiene, and we also focus on our international projects, which focus on building communities. We are leaders of this community, but we are here to serve this community and therefore build up this community, and we are very proud of our efforts over the 40 years, and we hope to continue those for another 40 years, one service project at a time. Thank you very much again.
Thank you, sir. We're on item number six. This is second. Harvest Food Bank, Erica Padilla Chavez, the CEO, will be making, "Good afternoon." Will be making a presentation to us. Ms. Padilla Chavez, very good to see you again.
It's a pleasure to be here, Mayor Keely, members of the council. Thank you so much for making time. I know I have a presentation. Do I maneuver? Do you maneuver? You will maneuver. Great, I'll just do next slide. I know that I only have five minutes, so I'm going to breeze through my presentation to allow for some time for Q and A. I'm here this afternoon to, thank you. I click this way? Thank you. I'm here this afternoon just to brief you on the status of food security in our county in light of some barely, very loudly understood cuts at the federal level that will impact food security levels in our city of Santa Cruz and in our county as a whole. First, I'd like to introduce you to our new mission. Our food bank just approved a five-year new strategic plan. We are continuing to be focused on nourishment, but we're doing more than that. We recognize that the work we do is aimed to improve people's health and well-being in this mission that you see before you and captures that new element of our work, and I'll talk a little bit about what we are doing on that front. Before I go on to talk about the objectives of, I want to acknowledge your city manager, Matt Huffaker, who served on our board for six years, and he continues to be a source of advice for the food bank, so thank you, Matt. This afternoon, very quickly, I just want to again bring you to basic understanding of how we operate our county's food security system. I'd like to provide you insight into the cuts that we are already experiencing and what that means. I'll give some detailed data as to how many members of your city are accessing food through our food bank network. I'll talk a bit about the pivots that we're having to do at the moment, given the demand that we are seeing grow across our county and some policies at the national level that is impinging on the lives of our neighbors. And then, of course, ultimately, I'd like to invite your council to continue elevating this conversation as you continue to plan forward for caring for your community. So very quickly, you all should be very proud. We are the first food bank in the state of California, and we owe it all to UC Santa Cruz students and in particular the Black Panther Club of UC SE, who really spurred the movement to create a food bank in this county. We are the second in the nation, but we're the best ones. I do want to just say that it's important for you to know that we are a part of a national and statewide network. We are highly organized. We have to be. At the national level, there are over 220 food banks that are affiliated with Feeding America. That is our federal sister organization. All things USDA and federal advocacy happens through that avenue. At the state level, we have the California Association of Food Banks. There are 41 food banks in the state of California. We are the first and the best. And in our county, we also consider our partner agencies, of which we have 66, part of our county network. So when you hear me say the word "network," I'll qualify it by saying "national, state, or local." This is a map of all the distribution sites in our county, so every single spec, don't worry about the color. The color just is the difference between a partner agency and our own staff distributing food, but needless to say, every single one of these dots is staffed by amazing volunteers from throughout our community. And I'll just say that cumulatively, our food bank benefits to the tune of 15 full-time equivalent employees when you sum all the hours of our volunteer efforts across the county. You're talking millions of dollars that I don't have, and it just shows the power of what can happen when we work together. This is a very important diagram. We are updating our data for our county as I speak, but it's important for you to understand where people access food and how they get their assistance. The majority of the individuals who are food insecure access food benefits through the CalFresh program or SNAP program is what we call it at the national level. About 42% of those who are food insecure access food through that channel, then it's followed by your food bank. Then you see school meals, serving as a third in line, and that C A C F P really stands for Child and Adult Programs, like Meals on Wheels and others like that. And then WIT comes in at a very small sliver, but yet so important. This is the food security ecosystem for our county. The challenge we are having, that red arrow, there has been major transformation to that program, and that will lead to a lot of people falling out of care under that program. And inevitably, you're going to see the shift move to food banks. And that, across America, that is what food banks are preparing for. And frankly, we're doing it at a time when the federal government has already cut us resources. In your local food bank, you see the two programs, the LFPA and some USDA food emergency programming that was already cut. These are permanent cuts. These are not one-offs. These are forever, I need to figure out how to add another million dollars to my food budget. Then we know that the CalFresh program, which by the way, in our county, 45,000 people are enrolled in that program, a cumulative amount of $80 million that comes into our county for that program. Inevitably, some people will fall out of eligibility requirements because they're making it onerous, although I'll say that we are working closely with our county partners and other food security champions across our county to shore up, preventing people from falling out of eligibility. And then lastly, of course, the ripple effect will be multiple and it will be felt. Our local retailers have advocated with us to prevent those cuts. Obviously, we didn't, we weren't victorious, but they estimated that 20% of the goods that they sell are attributed to the CalFresh program. So you can see the ripple effect to our local economy as well. This is a slide, and we're still auditing our last years, but it shows you the history of food donations to actual needs. These are counts, not unique individuals, so how many times a person went to one of our distribution sites. What you see really here is a crocodile mouth. The difference between need and food donations equals to the amount of dollars the food bank will need to raise to purchase the food to fill that gap. This is only going to get wider, and we are doing a lot to try to optimize our work and being innovative, but this is the reality of where we stand. So how are we preparing? As I stated, we're convening leaders to start preparing. We're not going to react. We're going to be thinking forward. We are addressing fears primarily in our immigrant community right now that has already demonstrated fears with coming out to distribution sites. So what are we doing about that? We are working with the hospitality industry to see how we can deliver food to our immigrant workforce there and to our agricultural workforce as well. We're also doing home deliveries. We are optimizing our internal operations because we have to. We have to stretch that dollar now even more so, and we're leveraging new partnerships like partnering with healthcare, where we can actually deliver food to medical population to see a return to our food bank. These are individuals that were probably already accessing food. We're just now providing them medically tailored groceries and getting some revenue to help leverage our funding. And of course, we're educating the community about what's happening and maximizing engagement because it's going to take a village for us to address what's coming down the pike. And Tom Vilsec was a secretary of agriculture who did a lot to address food insecurity and agricultural needs in our nation, and I love this quote. I live by this quote. This is really an aspirational goal, but one that has been demonstrated for 53 years here in our county with our food bank. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, and I hope you took away a couple of new learning nuggets from what I just shared. Thank you.
Ms. Padilla Chavez, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you personally for your great work and the organization, and our community is stronger and better because of your presence. I think we understand the challenge, and that will be something we need to rise to, but thank you very much for being here. Let me ask if Councilmember, Councilmember Golders recognized. Then Councilmember Brunner.
I echo the mayor's comments, and I would, I just am curious when you're thinking about distribution sites for people that maybe would be having a fear of picking up food, and I saw that you had the women and children and the schools on there as almost the next sources. Have you considered partnering with the schools to make those distribution sites?
Many strategies. I talked about home delivery, so anyone in the community can actually call our hotline and ask for home delivery service. We can make that happen, and we are establishing and expanding food pantries at all the schools so that food is accessible to children and their families at school sites. Yes, Brene, this is a great strategy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brunner is recognized.
Thank you for the information and presentation. My question is, what's the best way, call to action for the community to support right now our food bank?
Well, what I'll say is two ways, very, well, actually, three ways. One, individuals should not go by without food out of fear or a challenge in accessing food. Anyone in a neighborhood can pick up a food for their neighbor, first of all. That's like call to action at the individual level. At the collective level, we can't do what we do without volunteers who help us pack the food that we distribute, so you can also volunteer. And then lastly, of course, financially, you can support. $1 equals three meals. We have the ability of purchasing power, so we are asking the community to support us. And I'll just say, that million-dollar hit that you saw with those two federal programs, we went, we asked the community back in the spring, "Can you help us fill the gap?" Because what really didn't come in is your protein. We source fish, actually not fish, because we source it locally, but pork and chicken and beef, we source that through USDA. That's an expensive commodity for us to procure, so we asked our community to step up and help us, and we were able to secure the money that we lost through the USDA. So we're now, we're not giving them the top-of-the-line, top loin, but we're getting them some protein to make sure that their nourishment is well-rounded. So that's one way you can support. And then lastly, I'll just say a little data point. So how many residents of the city of Santa Cruz benefit from the work that we do in our network? Our latest numbers show 13,700 people have benefited monthly from what we provide at the food bank, and just wanted to give you that data point, and this is as of last month.
Thank you. Vice Mayor is recognized.
Just a brief comment. Thank you, Ms. Padilla Chavez, for the presentation, and I just want to acknowledge you and your leadership and your whole team for thinking outside the box and thinking of various ways to generate revenue, to get donors, to get volunteers. This is the time to not do status quo and rise up to the occasion, so thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much for being here. We are on presiding officer's announcements. I have none. Statement of disqualification. Anybody have a disqualification on the consent or regular agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have none.
Very good. Thank you. City Attorney, report. Mr. City Attorney, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Keely, members of the council. This afternoon, the council met in closed session at 1:00 PM in the Courtyard Conference Room. There were four items of business before the council this afternoon. First item was a conference with legal counsel concerning liability claims. Four claimants were discussed in closed session. Those are Curtis, Pete Thompson, Francisco Ortega, Corville Corporation, and Carlos R. Lopez. Those are also listed on your consent calendar for council action this afternoon as Agenda Item Number 10. Second item was a status update from the city attorney's office on a matter of pending litigation concerning the case currently pending in the Sacramento County Superior Court entitled California Grocers Association versus the city of Santa Cruz. That's litigation relating to the Sweden beverage tax. Council received a report from the city attorney's office on that item. Third item was a conference with legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation. There was one item of significant exposure to litigation. Fourth item was a public employment discussion involving, again, the city attorney's office. There was no reportable action.
Thank you, sir. Council meeting calendar. Madam Clerk, anything you'd like to bring to our attention?
No changes.
Thank you so much. We are on the consent agenda. For those of you that might be unfamiliar with it, we will be taking up items eight through 14, inclusive on one action. We'll be taking these up on one vote. What I will do is ask if members first would like to pull an item, comment on an item, or have a question about an item. I will then go out to the public, ask you if you have any of those. If you wish to make a comment on one or more of the consent agenda items, you have a total of three minutes to do that, whether you're commenting on one or five or whatever, three minutes. Let me start on my right with Councilmember Trigaro on the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. I have a comment on item 11.
Please proceed.
Which is the Market Street Senior Center Accessibility Improvement Project. I want to highlight that staff is bringing forward a project to provide the construction of two fully ADA-compliant entrances to this area, to the site, as well as creating accessible bathroom, restroom renovations, and this is all vital improvements that are made possible through the Community Development Block grant funds that are coming in. And having those ADA improvements in our, my district's very active senior center is very welcome, and I also want to give a thank you to Parks and Recs. And I also want to give a thank you to Parks and Rec staff. After receiving public comment and an email from me, they're working along together with the senior center to explore options for a bike rack at the center, which of course is not ADA, but does provide a benefit, small and meaningful in the context of our city's health and all policies work. And we already have bike racks in inventory that can be utilized at that location, so I just want to highlight and thank our staff for their quick response and thoughtfulness with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brunner is recognized on the consent agenda.
I have none, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Golders recognized on the consent agenda. Councilmember O'Hara is recognized on the consent agenda.
Thank you, mayor. Just a brief comment on Item Nine, the Fifth Amendment of the JPA for the library system. I just wanted to extend my compliment and appreciation to Assistant City Manager Michelle Templeton. This is an incredibly complex funding strategy. I thought the staff report really provided council and the public a clear understanding of that process, so I appreciate it, and I also wanted to extend my appreciation to staff. I don't actually know who is our negotiator, is that you? For negotiating a longer term, given the complexity, having that term is very helpful, so I just want to do compliment staff and share my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. The Vice Mayor is recognized on the consent agenda.
No comments for me today.
Thank you. Let me ask if there's anyone with us who wishes to comment on one or more of the consent agenda items. This would be your opportunity to do so. Good afternoon again, sir.
Yeah, my name is James Euling Whitman. I wanted to comment on the consent agenda, Item Number Eight, the minutes from the August 12th meeting, and then Number Nine, the library, Fifth Amendment. I mean, I was in this room six years ago when this was being discussed. Sure would be interesting to track the financing on that. That's all I'll say on that for now. You know, I love to be caught making mistakes, and I had a very pleasant one today. You know, it really figures the, I spoke about three books. One was Murder by Incheckston by Justus Mullins, nineteen ninety-seven. Other one was The Terrible Thirteen-Thirteen, and then this, The Metrocrats, Regionalism and Non-Law Governments Are Destroying the United States by Joe Hindman. Joe Hindman is a woman. Women seem to have a lot more smart guts than men for a long time. Want to write about the author. For more than fifteen years, Joe Hindman had been known as an unyielding opponent of the alien ideas that have been turning the self-government of Americans into grotesque replica of old-world, quote, divine rights of rulers, unquote. Her history, that she was born in California, came out of the college about the time the metropolitan government movement was forming its own notorious tangible... Dot, dot, dot. The Public Administration Clearinghouse at thirteen thirteen East Thirtyeth Street, Chicago, Illinois, known vicariously as Patch. Thirteen thirteen, the Thirteen-Thirteen Center in Syndicate Metro thirteen thirteen. Read fast. Her path crossed, oh, you know. I was able to kind of read this into the record that, you know, I can give the Metrocrats a lot of credit, but if you talk about John D. Rockefeller and Leland Stanford and Andrew Carnegie, they were so successful at pacifying the people of the United States before nineteen twenty that they sent John Ivy over to Germany to train Joseph Goebbels and Göring and Hitler on how to pacify the population. So I left my comments with the county last week, is who were actually the Nazis in the room? Because it was the Metrocrats that trained the Nazis. It's not, I'm just bringing it up for open conversation. I'll be speaking on something later, a presentation in the afternoon in the supervisors' meeting, where I, all I could think of is, it was redemption. I listened to thirty minutes of commentary. They really discussed nothing of the notes that I, limited notes that I took. Because what is redemption for everyone? Everybody can change, and there's a lot of awful things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Anyone online? Yes. We'll take person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Yes, hello. Yeah, this is Garrett again. Item Seventeen seeks to force people out of their cars due to a future lack of parking driven by...
Let me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Did you say Item Seventeen? So we are on the consent agenda, Items Eight through fourteen. Do you have comment on Item, any of the Items Eight through fourteen, sir? I will take that as a no. Let me see if there's anyone else on the consent agenda. Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. Councilmember Golders moves. Councilmember O'Hara seconds. The consent agenda, debate or discussion, seeing and hearing none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and is ordered. We're on the consent public hearing item. This is Items Fifteen and Sixteen. We will be taking these up on one motion. I will open the public hearing at this time on Items Fifteen and Sixteen. Anyone wish to testify on Items Fifteen and/or Sixteen? Seeing and hearing none. Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body.
Move.
Motion by the Vice Mayor to approve as recommended. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Trigero. Debate or discussion, seeing and hearing none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and is ordered. We're on Item Seventeen. This is a Transit Approximate Developments, Transportation and Parking Challenges. This item is brought to us by the Vice Mayor and Councilmembers O'Hara and Trigero. Madam Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. So the item before you reflects what we have been hearing from the community through the past year or so. And it really, it really brings forward the growing challenges that we are experiencing and anticipating experiencing, brought on by state laws that are minimizing parking requirements in transit corridors, near transit corridors. And we recognize that while, while this advances housing goals and climate goals and sustainability goals, which we share as a city, we are faced with the realities of the impacts on neighborhoods and business districts. So we've heard those concerns, we've seen some of those concerns and experienced them ourselves, and we, with this approach, we want to, again, balance the state goals, our local goals of moving forward with housing, of sustainability progress, and balance that with economic development vitality and neighborhood quality of life. So that's what you see before you this afternoon. We have outlined some suggestions that we worked with staff on, things to explore, strategies to explore. So as the mayor said, I worked with Councilmember Trigero and Councilmember O'Hara. So this brief, very brief, five-minute presentation, because it's all outlined in the staff report, I'm, excuse me, in the agenda report, will show where we see the challenges and describe some potential solutions. And we invite your feedback and your questions, we invite your input, and hopefully we can get the council to support this, so we can look at some solutions. I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Trigero to just touch on some of the challenges we've heard and experienced.
Councilmember Trigero.
Thank you both, and thank you for spearheading this. As the Vice Mayor mentioned, this is a compilation of so much thought that came from our constituents and feedback and concerns that they were sharing with us. And there's several consistent concerns that kept rising that we've heard as development projects have come forward. One being neighborhood strain, the parking strain on residents who are competing for curb space outside their homes. Parking challenges in business districts for both workers and visitors. We also have heard, and I've heard this also through my work at the AAA, the Aging Area Aging Council, equity for seniors. We have folks in our city that have new or changing mobility limitations, and for them and their working families, not everyone can bike, walk, or take transit as easily, and we need to be mindful of those folks. Also, accountability gaps have come forward. Developers can now waive parking without ensuring alternative transportation is in place. A lot of this is coming out of the specific state law requirements that have arisen in the last couple of years, and that leaves us with a lasting concern, which is limited local control. These state laws leave our cities, and my colleagues and I, to manage these impacts without tailored tools. And so that's what we're hoping to investigate and bring together here. Thank you. I'll toss it back to Councilmember O'Hara.
Councilmember O'Hara is recognized.
Thank you, mayor. I echo Councilmember Trigero's appreciation of our Vice Mayor. She really did spearhead this process, and feel like I'm coming in a little bit at the coattails. I will say that the approach that we're recommending for council consideration today is to really lean heavily on staff and our community partnerships that are deeply invested in considering these issues and coming up with solutions. We don't expect those big ideas to come from this council. We expect those ideas to come from those that are really working on this. So we are proposing a balanced and pragmatic approach and giving staff direction to come, to really explore and talk to those partners about bringing recommendations forward. We think that collaborative approach, that will take some time, probably about six months, is the right approach here. So what are the, some of the options that we're talking about? These are just options. We really do think staff will come up with ideas in addition to these, but we did want to provide council some consideration to chew on as we make these recommendations. One is updating the development impact fees. Current traffic impact fees are narrowly focused on car congestion. By updating the methodology, we can shift towards funding multimodal improvements like bike, pedestrian, and transit facilities that better align with the city's climate goals, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, and transportation priorities, but ultimately work toward getting more people out of their cars. We'd like to strengthen transportation objective standards. We talk a lot about objective standards in, in this council chamber, and we think that there's an opportunity to strengthen those transportation-oriented ones. Today's objective standards already require things like sidewalks and bike partner, bike park, parking, excuse me, but we have a chance to strengthen them. Incorporating the Active Transportation Plan and Traffic Calming Guidelines into development requirements will ensure that new projects proactively deliver the infrastructure residents need to walk, bike, and ride transit safely, while also reducing pressure on surrounding neighborhoods. One of the most, I think, probably talked about ideas is refining our neighborhood parking program. The current program relies on neighborhood petitions, which can be time-consuming and reactive. As larger developments can take, take shape along major corridors, we need to streamline that process and modernize policies so residents aren't left dealing with spillover parking. That is a significant concern, not only for residents, but for our business community and for our workers here as well. Options can include automatic initiation of permit zones when impacts are identified, cost recovery improvements, and limits on new high-density projects accessing neighborhood permits. And then ultimately, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, this is all really happening at the statewide level, so because many of these impacts stem directly from those state policy changes, it's critical that we also push state-level solutions. So including this issue in the city's legislative agenda positions us to advocate for tools and resources to help communities balance housing growth with neighborhood livability. Thank you.
Thank you. So we really want some local policy tools that we can have in our tool belt so that we can address these concerns that we've heard and seen. Again, you know, six months, we think we, that should give some ample time to explore these options and others that we haven't thought of. I do want to acknowledge community members who've worked with us over the last several months. I see some of you here who've expressed the challenges and described them to us that helped shape this agenda item. We'll continue to work with you, community members. We're going to engage with our commissions, and we're going to engage with appropriate organizations. And again, this is a balance of still retaining our housing, climate sustainability, environmental, excuse me, economic vitality goals while making our community livable. So that's what's before you today, and we'll open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. Let me see if members have questions, comments, before we go out to the public. Councilmember Golders.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys bringing this item forward. I know it's something that we've all been hearing, and it seems that, I know this didn't happen when you were a legislator, but our legislators don't think about the impacts that sometimes can spill over to be, you know, public, public problems. And this is some, I appreciate your proactive approach to this. There is one thing I'd like to add to, and it doesn't have to be an amendment or anything like that, but just some additional direction. I know we've had issues with parking permits when they're in the neighborhoods, and then they're also in this, they have, the neighbors get to vote, right? That's how it is now. But they're also in the school zones, so around Galt, around Westlake, around Santa Cruz High, and students are ticketed and towed, and teachers and staff are ticketed and towed, and they didn't have a say in whether their neighborhood became a permit, and they don't get permits. And so I just want to say, like, when we're looking at the solutions, let's not forget schools or other, there might be things I'm not thinking about, other businesses that operate where people also use street parking. That was my...
Madam Vice Mayor.
That's good feedback. Thank you. I think we can give that additional direction. But you just made me remember that part of the impact fee that we want to look at is enforcement, because that's been a challenge in certain neighborhoods where there's either the parking requirements and parking permits or loading zones. So a more robust enforcement, building our capacity to do enforcement is sort of part of what we're looking at. I know that's not exactly what you were talking about, but it made me think of, that's another part of the package.
Let me see if there are members of public who wish to make comment on this item. This would be your opportunity to do so. Good afternoon, sir.
Yeah, we're talking about Item Seventeen versus slight point of order. I was out of the room for...
Yep, we're on Seventeen.
Less than four minutes. You guys went through Fifteen and Sixteen?
We had the public hearings on those, and we have moved to Item Seventeen.
I am blown away. I had so much more to say on both of those items, but it's gone for four minutes. That's really crafty. Uh, but it happened. So as far as the traffic on Seventeen, I mean, I've spoken about this before, trying to maneuver around this town with the deliberate UN agenda of twenty thirty, with, parking just seems to get more and more limited, although you did destroy recently through your actions a really nice grove of trees that I'd spent dozens of times there along with tens of thousands of other people. It's just one example of the terrorism that's going on here, where you guys are just puppets. Going back to the traffic, you know, I can't believe how crappy the design is. I've been commuting through Santa Cruz, coming to Santa Cruz for more than the last fifty years, with the changes in the last fifteen with the one-way roads and all these signs. You know, I've joked, you guys can turn a regular R1, one residence into ten. Where are people in a park? You're getting rid of the, you're not really getting rid of the cars, you're getting rid of the carbon, and that's the plants and all life. That's what this agenda is. Now, I certainly had a lot to say about Items Fifteen and Sixteen, and I am blown away that that got slammed through in less than four minutes. You know, it's non-uncommon in the city of Capitola, rooms twice this size, for the room to be completely full, standing room only, granted, the meetings are usually in the evening, but there's not many members of the public to witness the genocides that you guys are just rubber stamping. Can't be any more polite about it than that. I won't use up the whole time, because I had a lot to say on Four, on Fifteen and Sixteen.
Anyone else? Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Brett Garrett from Santa Cruz, and I just want to recommend personal rapid... I'm Brett Garrett from Santa Cruz, and I just want to recommend personal rapid transit as possibly the best way to improve our transportation system while reducing the demand for parking. The city of Santa Cruz pursued this in the past. They were pursuing personal rapid transit many years ago, but the effort got lost in the financial crisis of 2008. The plan at that time was to build a system going from the boardwalk through downtown and on up to UC Santa Cruz. And I just, I think this is a great time to revive those efforts as the technology for PRT has vastly improved. And the new construction projects call for improved transportation, which could be built anywhere. You could actually, in a new development, you could have a PRT station in the development. It's pretty amazing technology. PRT consists of automated electric podcars operating on a dedicated network of guideways, providing nonstop service between any two access points in the system. It's public transportation without compromise, very efficient, very convenient, very safe, and very low cost. You'll be hearing more about PRT in the coming months as PRT could be an excellent last-mile solution for the countywide train proposal. Or better yet, in my opinion, PRT could extend to Watsonville, making the train, the proposed train, unnecessary because PRT could provide better service than the proposed train at a fraction of the cost. But for today, I want to advocate PRT as the best way to reduce car dependence and thereby reducing the demand for parking. You can see the website at santacruzprt.org or reach out to me for more information. Thank you very much for working on this issue.
Well, thank you very much. We have a person online, then we'll be right with you. Person online, good afternoon. Welcome to the City Council meeting.
Okay, yeah, this is Garrett again. Hey, I guess I have to read some of this over. Is that Item 17 seeks to assist forcing people out of their cars due to a future lack of parking driven by planned ever-dense residential growth, whether they like it or not. Certainly, the preferred maximum rate of density increases here is an issue the people should have been deciding, but it never gets put forth for a vote. It was given in the past, populations always increase, but that is really not necessarily true for American citizens. Over the last 15 years, actually, the net, you know, population growth for Americans is zero, and all population increase has been from immigration. And so these relative density increases here are more a government-planned reality and not an unavoidable future. Immigration may well radically slow down, you may have heard. There's also actually a vast amount of open space in America could be used, but it's not. The automobile was one of the great inventions of all time. It's given people tremendous extra freedom to go where they like, when they like. No other form of transportation, except for very rare travel events and destinations, can match cars in that way for most people most of the time. You get rid of cars, you get rid of freedom. Sure, if we were building a city from scratch, modern transportation ideas might improve on the limitations of rebuilding an old city evolved with far less people in mind. But getting people where they want, when they want, without restricting their freedom and minimal effort and cost is a challenge. You should give us some thought. May I suggest, if the result isn't better, why do it? May I suggest that a logical improvement be a proven requirement of any action? I like having this discussion, but I suspect it will be more of the same as we always hear from the city. Get rid of cars at any cost and freedom and quality of life for some very dubious reasons. And bicycles are relatively unsafe. Strangely, totally missing this item, since you're really just asking for the staff to brainstorm and come up with some ideas, is an attempt to create more parking. I mean, if parking scarcity is the problem, it seems like coming up with ideas to create more parking would be a no-brainer. But strangely, it's all missing, isn't it? So anyway, and I want staff to look at how feasible it is to assist tenants of new parkingless structures not be allowed to park cars in the street. Unless you're how you do that. After all, that is your assumption, just being so close to transit. And if that assumption is false, well, it's your assumption and your problem to fix if it turns out not to be true. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to the City Council meeting.
Okay, I'm Deborah Marks. I live in the Central Park neighborhood. I know I've been before you many times, usually about the developments, five of which are going up within about two to, one to three blocks of our homes, totaling the ones that approve close to 1,000 units with maybe about 600-plus parking spaces. And we do have some parking permits that we got because the county people used to park in our neighborhood. And I've lived in my house a very long time. It was really hell. It was Monday through Friday, eight to five. And it really made our neighborhood an unpleasant place to live. And once, after 20 years of trying, we finally got permits, our neighborhood just blossomed into a real cohesive neighborhood. And the thought of going back to that and it being 24/7 is putting a lot of stress and a lot of burden on myself and the people who live in my neighborhood. And I've been going around talking to people in my neighborhood, and pretty much everybody gets it. And a lot of people depend on street parking. They don't have driveways, they don't have garages, they park on the street. And so far, probably half the people I've talked to. So I really want to thank Shebra and the other council members who are bringing this forward. And I really, really hope the city can come up with something because we've been looking into it already. We've had a few talks with Shebra and with the parking managers. And it's hard to do this process. It is a burdensome process, and we're all busy. So, you know, we're worn out, to be honest. We really could use some relief on this. Because there's also the traffic, the noise, the trash, all the stuff that goes with us. We have many, many children who play in the streets. And we have three blocks, we have no place to go. When we're parked out, we're done. What do we do? Double park? I mean, we would have no options. So it's not fair for developers to choose to build with no parking. I know that it's allowed, but they're still choosing to do that and then put the burden on the neighborhood. So I really hope you guys will support this for my neighborhood and neighborhoods like mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Anyone else? Anyone online? Matters back before the body, excuse me, I'm sorry. We do have someone online. We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Council meeting.
Wow, you guys have your work cut out for you today. A lot of really strange comments. To one, I would like to say, be careful how you throw the word Nazi around. My first job was helping to take care of women who were rescued from those death camps in World War II, and they got the ink to prove it. And I learned to see my indigenous and Afro-indigenous grandparents in an additional way, in that you can't tell by looking at someone the price they've had to pay to live in America. Thanks.
Well, thank you for that. Anyone else online? Anyone else with us? Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. No, you don't whistle at me. Yeah. Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. Madam Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you. I have a slightly different version than what was in our agenda report, and I'm wondering if City Clerk can pull it up, based on some feedback that we got after the agenda report was made public and the comment that we got from Councilmember Golda. So here is the new motion. To direct staff to conduct a review of potential policy options to mitigate parking issues associated with transit proximate developments. Staff should evaluate feasibility, potential costs, and the impact of each option on residents, developers, schools, business workers, and visitors. Direct staff to engage with the Transportation and Public Works Commission, Downtown Commission, Planning Commission, Downtown Management Corporation, Visit Santa Cruz County, Santa Cruz Area Chamber of Commerce, and Downtown Commission's there twice, we can delete that part, sorry, to solicit feedback and related transportation and parking policy. Direct staff to return to council within six months with an assessment of potential solutions, including recommendations for specific actions, funding sources, and any necessary policy changes. And include mitigation of mobility and parking impacts on the city's state legislative platform agenda. So Bonnie, on Item 2 Downtown Commission, the second one can be deleted. That was a mistake. Yeah, thank you. That's the motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Councilmember O'Hara. Madam Vice Mayor, you may open on your motion.
I think I made my comments during the presentation. I think this is the first step of probably many, and the conversation will continue.
For the debate or discussion? Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank my colleagues for sitting down and taking time to dig and get at this and start to explore solutions and take this direction. We've heard, all of us, along the way. So I look forward to the recommendations and any potential updates that we can implement to support the transportation and parking challenges in our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, I wonder, I don't necessarily need this in any way to be added formally. There is a section of the government code 6595915 which speaks to parking plans and density bonus projects. I wonder if you, as part of what you're doing, I don't need this as a separate item, would be looking at that as well. Thank you very much. I don't need it added to the motion, just if you would take a look at it, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Further questions or comments? Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentaya Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We are on Item 18. This is actions to support Seabright and Harbor businesses affected by the Murray Street Bridge project. We have staff presentations. Mr. Crossley is here, Mr. Starkey is here, Ms. Unit is here. They will please come forward, all of you. Thank you very much. We will receive presentations from the Public Works Director, Mr. Nguyen, and our staff. We then have council members who have been working on this issue who will also have recommended actions and so on. Mr. Nguyen, good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, members of the public. My name is Nathan Nguyen, Director of Public Works. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on actions to support the Seabright and Harbor businesses that have been affected by the Murray Street seismic retrofit project. The city team, including Public Works, City Manager's Office, Economic Development, have been working at a fever pitch for the last two weeks in analyzing the outlined options as a part of the August 12 co-council motion. It's important to note that this project has been a part of our capital investment program since 1993, and it's required a lot of close coordination with the Port District, which has an active multimillion-dollar dock relocation project currently underway, as well as our County Sanitation Sewer District, CDFW, NOAA, amongst many others. So while the city is very excited to see this project finally in construction, we also recognize that there are impacts from this. And so we look forward to hearing your input as well as seeking direction on how to minimize those impacts. And so with that, I will hand it over to our city engineer, Kevin Crossley, to begin the presentation.
Mr. Crossley, good afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We've got a quick outline of what we're going to cover. I'm going to touch on some key information about the project schedule, try to unpack a little bit why we're talking about a three-year project, touch on how the project's funded. That becomes very relevant when we get into talking about what mitigation measures we can implement and how we pay for those. And I'm going to hand it off to Matt to talk about some of the trail alternatives that we were directed to explore and other transit alternatives that have been put on the table. And then finally, we'll close out with some other business support, wraparound options. Okay, so, starting with some important things about the project schedule, there's a number of factors and considerations that sort of go into how the contractor and the city came together to come up with the schedule that we're operating off of. The most notable is that we have some longstanding permit restrictions on when we can do certain activities in the water. Those are mostly designed around protection of marine life, specifically steelhead is one of the key species of concern. And so multiple permitting agencies all sort of overlap with their permitting language, and those come together to represent sort of the biggest challenge we have on a schedule front. And some of the photos, they're all very recent. They speak to what we're doing right now, which is work in the water. We're pile driving, and so that is really step one for kind of the major construction on this project is building up below water to the water surface and up to the bridge deck. Project sequencing, I just spoke to that. You can't start building a house from the roof down. You have to start from the foundation up. And so we're doing the same thing on this bridge retrofit. Maybe not a visible, but really big piece of this project is relocating a sanitary force main that serves the entire County Regional Sanitation District, roughly 5 million gallons per day flow through that pipeline. Part of our retrofit project is in conflict with that line. And so providing a new home for that pipe is an important part of the sequencing discussion. And then finally, we did, you know, believe it or not, tried to design this project to maintain one-way traffic to the maximum extent possible. The trade-off to that is that it does really restrict the contractor's working area. So you'll see in some of the photos, there's really no flat surfaces for them to work off of, and that's because they're using every possible square inch of the bridge deck as it's closed. Okay, and then finally, environmental work stoppages are another piece of the scheduled puzzle. We had to make some assumptions around how many hours per month we were going to be shut down because there are, as part of those permits, really strong and stringent requirements that if an otter or other marine mammal comes within a certain distance from the project, you have to stop all work. So that's baked into our project schedule. And then finally, there's many other stakeholders involved in this project. Nathan mentioned the Port District, they're a key partner. They have over $2 million worth of their own work that they're running in parallel to ours. And so they've been able to move their piece of the puzzle along successfully. And so that doesn't represent a scheduled challenge at the moment, but it is another sort of variable that we have to plan around. This is the really simple version of the project schedule. The actual schedule's 18 pages long, and we're at the front end of the project, as you can see, through probably month, three of the first and longest shutdown. I just want to make it clear that there are two long full closures. We're in the middle of the first one, and there's a second one planned for next year, after which we're talking about one to five-day closures to finish up like resurfacing of the bridge deck and other really pretty minor things. But this speaks to sort of the sequence that you have to build. I mentioned pile driving, that's where we're at right now. So we're taking care of all the pile driving we can this summer in the water, and then we'll be moving to the land-based piles. There's quite a bit of that in the early phases of the project. And then next summer, the big main event is going to be relocation of that force main. With that said, we're hopefully going to be out of the water by the end of next summer, which is a really big milestone because you start to get away from having to work in certain seasonal windows, which is a key thing for our contractor to then have more flexibility to progress on the work. We've had some questions about Saturday work, so I just wanted to address that. First, I'll start by saying that we've worked seven Saturdays on the job so far, which may not sound like a lot, but the contractors only had full control of the bridge since roughly July. Prior to that, PG&E was in the process of relocating all of their overhead utilities. So that was a major thing that had to happen before our contractor could even fully take control of the project and start doing their piece of the project. We've worked over 52,000 hours, roughly. There's about 40 people per day on average on the site. And one of the earlier photos was taken at dawn. We've had three days, just in the last week, where we started at 4:00 to 5:00 a.m. to time the work with the tide. So we're trying to maximize every opportunity that we can to make this project move along at as quick a pace as possible. We're going to shift over to funding if there's no questions on schedule. This is straight out of our budget documents. We're currently projecting that the total project cost is somewhere in the vicinity of 70 million. We have a local match that's covered 100% by gas tax, which is at about 11% of the total project cost. But with that, external funding from the state and federal government comes a lot of strings. So all of the work that we're doing is according to their federalized procurement guidelines. We had to go through, our contractor had to go through a very rigorous disadvantaged business outreach process as part of the bidding process, which, again, gets at some of the sort of extra steps that we have to take when we're involving this type of money in our work. We've already gone through our first Caltrans-level pre-audited on the project, three months in. So they do regular sort of health checks on how you're doing with all your project filing. But again, it speaks to sort of the level of oversight and control that this project has with the funding. And we've already approached Caltrans and FHWA about some of the things that are on the table for discussion today and whether those would be eligible through the approved funding for the project. And specifically, a temporary trail was determined to be something that was not eligible. So we would have to look at other sources of funding, and we can talk about that at a later point in the presentation. So. presentation. So, all that said, yeah, we have, although it's a very large and expensive project, we have very little discretion because there are lots of rules and restrictions on how both gas tax and federal and state money are spent. So I'm going to hand it off to Matt to talk about some of the trail alternatives.
Mr. Starkey, good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
Good afternoon, Matt Starkey, Transportation Manager. I'm going to talk more about some of the options that we were directed to look at. First here is the temporary trail. I was excited to hear that the community is really interested in adding this idea here. We looked at the project from Seabright to Seventh Avenue, and we considered that length because we needed to be careful on how we made accessible connections to this trail. So while we have a relatively small work zone, how we would connect to that trail is actually quite long at 3,000 feet there. There are some challenges with this corridor, which we're aware of as we are working on the rail trail project through this segment right now. Crossing on the bridge requires particular designs around fencing and railing to make that safe. Then also, as you approach Seventh Avenue, the tracks are much below the roadway grade there, so there, any sort of connections there require accessible elements. We also knew that we would need to work with our partners at RTC to get agreement on the tracks being out of service. While we don't see train service on this today, it is considered an active rail line. So we looked at four different options here. A pedestrian path, or we're calling the intermediate trail, a trail with just decking, and the interim trail, which was studied as a part of rail trail. The pedestrian path we looked at was four feet wide, which fits within the existing rails. At that width, though, we wouldn't be able to accommodate bicyclists very well. So we also looked at what we're calling the intermediate trail, which is an eight-foot-wide trail placed on top of the existing tracks. That would avoid doing any sort of significant drainage work, and at that width, we can accommodate bikes more easily on the section. We also looked at a wider option, which would be building a deck on top of the railroad tracks. This would allow us to provide the widest path possible to make it easier to use without impacting drainage or the tracks themselves. And then we went back into our project files to look at the interim trail that had been studied as a part of rail trail. That was a very generous wide path at 16 feet. It actually fully removed the tracks, but did have some drainage implications with that wide section. With these four options, we found that prices could range anywhere from $650,000 up to $7.4 million. We based those on work that we've done in the city to date, and we also received a price from the contractor on the project for the intermediate trail. So that $900,000 to $1.2 million price tag, depending on if we pave the top or not, is a number that we feel really good about. We've also received some emails about other members of the public doing their own cost estimating, and we feel that those numbers sort of fall in line with what we're seeing on the unpaved number there as well. So I think all in, if we were looking at the intermediate trail, you know, with removal, that could be up to $1.7 million in need to do an item like that. To pull off the trail, a key thing would be to think about funding. Kevin mentioned some of the challenges with the project. We would need to get some direction today if we're to move forward with a trail to identify extra funding for the project. Luckily enough, there is currently a call for projects underway from the RTC, and there's $8 million available in what's called RSTPX funding. I bring that up because typically, transportation funding requires the investments to be in place for 20 years. And so we'd be looking at doing some sort of demonstration or interim project, and so that particular funding source is very important if we're interested in going after it. With those sort of grant funding opportunities, there's always a local match that comes into play. In this source, it would be 12%. So if you had a $1.7 million project, we'd be looking at needing to find about $200,000 in local funding to complete that work. Beyond the funding issues with doing the temporary trail alternative, there's still the sort of typical project constraints that we would need to work through, environmental clearances, permits. We are working through seismic analysis on the Harbor Bridge right now with through the rail trail that we would need to get results back in December on. We would need to complete a design, and then, of course, ultimately negotiate using the rail line with RTC and Progressive Rail. We also looked at parking alternatives. This seems like a pretty easy one to implement. We recommended doing two-hour parking in the lower Seabright area. Currently, we don't think that'd be a big impact to the revenue that we receive. It is important to remember, though, that we use meters to ensure that we have curb turnover in front of businesses. So we do recommend that we maintain a two-hour parking overlay in that area. We would need to come back to City Council to sort of retroactively update the municipal code if we do receive that direction. We also looked at transit alternatives to increase usage in the area. Four different ideas we looked at, first one being considering the TIGM demonstration train that happened a while ago. We could further investigate that idea. There's certainly challenges with stations, how the train service would actually work, and so it would be a really challenging operation to pull off. We think one of the easier items to work on is to have us engage with Santa Cruz Metro on working on restoring the Route 3 into Seabright. Currently, that route has been detoured. Our understanding from them is that the additional travel time in the area makes it difficult to serve, serve here. So we would consider adding, if we were to add transit service, work with them on what sort of capital improvements, perhaps dedicated transit lanes might be needed to ensure that operation. We also looked at the Santa Cruzer shuttle. We know from the work their economic development colleagues doing that that effort costs about $65,000 a month. We felt that with what you could operate with a single shuttle between, you know, different points in Seabright and downtown, that it likely wasn't worth the cost and effort to do that option. The one idea that we were in favor of is the harbor taxi is considering now to fund additional service on that. It's a low monthly cost, and we've heard good results from that shuttle's operation. The next item we looked at was, how to consider using that single lane on the bridge to accommodate perhaps two-way traffic? For some context, there are 18,000 vehicles per day that cross Murray Street Bridge, 10,000 cross eastbound towards the harbor. So we do have a sort of directional priority going eastbound. In the afternoon peak period, it's even more eastbound traffic with 1,000 cars per hour in that peak hour going eastbound and only 600 cars going westbound. Since that bridge has been fully closed, I think it's been fair to say we've experienced additional traffic up on SoCal, which is impacting people's commutes and travel times that we would like to avoid in future operations here. The, that peak hour travel direction is why originally eastbound was proposed on the bridge, reduces the impact on SoCal, and then it also provides the emergency response vehicles that travel from the city to access the harbor area most quickly on their way to responding. So that's why we've had it as eastbound here. We looked at what two-way, two-way traffic through a single lane would, would look like. This is an application that's often used in more rural settings. We've probably experienced it on Highway 1, for example. They don't work as well in these longer segments that we see here, and we're, they don't, also don't work as well when we have bicyclists and pedestrians in the more urban condition that we're working in here as opposed to a more rural context like Highway 1. So considering that long distance, I just wanted to share some parameters we'd be working with, with two-way traffic in a single lane. So the work zone out there is about 1,000 feet long, which would take cyclists about 70 seconds to clear if we had a traffic signal there. That means that you'd wait at a red light for at least 70 seconds of opposing traffic coming at you, and then 70 seconds for that last car to enter the work zone and then clear. So you'd have about 140 seconds, two and a half minutes of time where you would just wait at the signal while traffic is processing. And so I don't think with the two-way traffic, we'd see much benefit as far as travel times in the area, and that's one reason it hasn't been recommended in the past. The other challenges with this is how we would operate the temporary traffic signals. They can't be optimized for a time of day. They operate very simply as opposed to a more complicated of full signals that we have. So those considerations are why that we felt that adding that sort of complexity and risk wasn't really worth it in this project, and why we've continued with our recommendation of eastbound traffic here. With that, I'll pass it off to Rebecca.
Ms. Unit, good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Good afternoon. Rebecca Unit, Economic Development Manager with the City of Santa Cruz. So I wanted to give a little bit of an overview of some of the community and business outreach that we've done on this project, both prior to the start and as we've continued through. So as Nathan mentioned, this project has been on the books for quite a while here, and council and various commissions have reviewed this, as well as the city's communications channels through press releases and our project website, project newsletters, a lot of communication in that form. As the project began, there was a community meeting, and we followed that up with a business meeting with the Seabright businesses to give them a little bit more detail into the project scope, hear feedback from them about what they would like to see in terms of support and various other requests and questions, much of which Matt has covered here as we've sort of gone through that feedback that we received. We've also done business walks, which is standard for a lot of our projects, to go out and meet in person and deliver project information, contact information to the businesses around the project site. And then you'd have ongoing email communication, meetings as needed, in-person outreach as needed, as well as project feedback surveys to get some insight from the businesses directly. From our initial conversations, there was an interest in doing business promotion and support. So we've had some ongoing promotional efforts that we've put together in terms of radio advertising on KAZU and K-Squid. We've done some Lookout Local promotion, promoted content article, as well as display ads that have gone out on their website, as well as in some of their newsletters. And so we've extended those through the summer period. We've also done some social media posts and advertisements, and we've worked through our economic development newsletter, the city's newsletters, as well as our partners that are in the business promotion space, looking at opportunities for other engagement with Visit Santa Cruz, Event Santa Cruz, Santa Cruz Chamber, Think Local First, those sorts. And then what we are currently working on, looking at increasing this, I'm sorry, there's a little bit of overlap there, we're looking at some additional advertising opportunities and some regional media outlets, looking at additional radio advertising, updating some of that messaging as we look to extend the water taxi service and various other ways to encourage that visitation. And then also, event programming is something that we've been looking at. We've had some engagement with a few different partners that are interested in potentially putting things on and looking at digging into that a little bit deeper. And then we've also entered into an agreement with Get Virtual, which is a business system service with some digital marketing and web presence. And then, of course, as economic development, we're available to meet one-on-one with businesses to help understand what their particular needs are, interests are, and be able to connect them with resources and consulting services that might be available. And that's a little image of our display ad that's been running in Lookout there. We are also looking at increasing and improving the signage. So as part of sort of our initial approach, there was some construction signage that was put out there signifying businesses open, but want to really elevate that and have some more positive messaging, encouraging the community and reminding them the importance of supporting our local businesses. So we've got some mockups here of some additional signage we're looking at installing, as well as potentially some yard signage that we could put in areas like Arana Gulch, or if neighbors or residents want to have those in their signs, just as a sign of support there, something we're exploring. We've also heard from the businesses, you know, an interest in some financial resources and support. And so we have looked at a couple different programs that we could provide, and the first of this is a potential business loan program. So looking at opportunities for low-interest loans with city guarantees, up to $25,000 with the full city guarantee, a four- to six-year term, 4% to 5% interest rate. And there's potential for forgiveness there as well, up to $20,000. We would need to have some verification of that impact for that qualification for forgiveness. And then we would also allow loans up to $50,000, and the city would be guaranteeing a portion of that. With the, we currently work with Grow America for our business lending programs, and so we already have that relationship in place, and we're looking to bring this program together in September if we receive that direction and interest from businesses. The other approach that we're looking at is a grant program, and so this is something that we've looked at examples from San Francisco and City of LA, looking at providing up to $20,000 in grant funding to businesses. This would need to, again, be based on sort of that verification of financial impact. We, our, our sales tax, where we do a lot of that verification, is delayed by several quarters, and so being able to get that sort of granular detail could make timing of this a little bit later on. We could also look at having some documentation with a signed attestation to the need for that verification if we want to do this sooner. There would be a need for a funding source to be identified for this program, so the timing is TBD with that as well. As I mentioned earlier, we have partnered with Get Virtual, a business resource. We've used them during COVID times and all throughout. They've become a really great service for businesses to be able to meet one-on-one, get some audit of their web presence, their marketing, digital marketing, and get some training and services to be able to make improvements there, get things going if they haven't been doing it already. And this is a value of about $5,000 to $15,000, depending on the different scope of services that businesses are looking at. And so this is available now. We did do some outreach to businesses through a survey and got a lot of positive interest in this, so looking forward to rolling that out to businesses. One of the other things that we heard from businesses is the value of the temporary outdoor dining that they have on private property. So we know what a lifeline this has been since we first launched this program, and so we are supportive of extending that through July 1, 2029, is the proposal we've put forward here, bringing that year after the bridge closure. The current permits are set by a temporary ordinance that expires July 1, 2026, so we would need council's approval of an amendment to that ordinance. One thing I also am requesting direction on is whether we should extend this only to Seabright businesses or look at all of the businesses that currently have these permits in the city. So there are currently 21 businesses operating under temporary outdoor dining permits on private property, and five of those are in the Seabright area. As I mentioned, we conducted a survey just prior to this council meeting to get feedback on a number of the items that we've discussed today, and so just want to give a brief overview of sort of that level of support for the various actions. Strong support for the water taxi and increase to the creation of the metro bus service. There was opposition to removing parking on Seabright to allow for that peak travel time bus lane, and then 58% requested Get Virtual services. There's good support for the additional signage and marketing promotions that we put together, as well as very strong support for event programming. Just to dive in a little bit deeper, we gave a few samples of event ideas to put out there, and we're definitely happy to talk with businesses more individually, or if people have ideas, feel free to send them my way. But we're looking at how we can support activating these events, either putting out a request for proposals to provide some funding for these events to occur, or doing a sponsorship if event producers would like to get some subsidy on their costs to put those on. And then just solidifying sort of project communications going forward, I will be serving as the business liaison to businesses on this, and Ashley is our community relations specialist on more of the larger project questions going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Unit. Mr. Nguyen?
Thank you. In closing, we have a slide here just for the community if they want to continue to follow projects. follow project updates with the Murray Street Bridge Project, again, at cityofsantacruz.com/msb. And in addition to this, the team will be working on revising our webpage with some additional graphics to help explain the complexity of the project. So be on the lookout for that in the coming weeks. We'll be sure to share that update once it's done. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, sir, and thanks to each one of the folks who made presentations. Let me ask if there are questions or comments by council members. We have Councilmember Golders recognized.
I just want to first pause and thank staff. I know, I want to thank Matt Starkey, Director Nguyen, Kevin, I want to thank Rebecca, Bonnie, and I don't see Ashley here, but thank Ashley. I know this was a planned project, and I have been hearing about it for at least five years, but when the reality hit, I think it really created kind of an emergency situation for the business owners in the area. My question is, when we're talking about the Seabright businesses, are we also including the businesses in the harbor? Great, thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. The Vice Mayor is, excuse me, if we could just, I didn't see Councilmember O'Hara. I'm going to go there, then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Rebecca. If you could put the slide back up of the survey, I had a question about whether we queried the businesses on the trail alternatives, because I don't see that data on here.
We did not.
And when was this disseminated?
We started requesting feedback, I believe, on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor is recognized. I'm sorry, we finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you. I think maybe this is first a question to City Attorney Kundadi. We've, we've heard the request to declare a state of emergency. I'm wondering if you could share how that's defined by our municide code or Coastal Commission or any of the relevant bodies? And then I'll have a follow-up question to that.
Yes. Bear with me one second, please. It is defined in our municipal code as an actual or threatened enemy attack, sabotage, extraordinary fire, flood, storm, epidemic, civil disorder, earthquake, release of hazardous materials, or similar public calamity or disaster. And that is for the purpose of declaring an emergency under our municide code, like the cliff damage that we sustained due to weather over the winter, the COVID pandemic. There's a separate definition, and it's probably more relevant to this discussion, and that has to do with the permitting processes necessary for establishing a temporary use, like a pedestrian pathway over the bridge, and that's under the coastal, under the Coastal Act, and that's the standard for issuing an emergency coastal development permit. The definition is very similar, but under Coastal Commission regulations, the existence of the emergency can't extend more than thirty days.
Okay.
And then a regular coastal development permitting process would be applicable. So from a legal perspective, I understand the sentiment behind characterizing the circumstance out there as an emergency, but from a legal perspective, it doesn't really have any impact on the city's ability to go one direction or another with respect to different measures that the council might provide direction on.
Thank you. And then maybe a follow-up with Director Nguyen. It sounds like that we don't fit that definition, but if we, well, maybe this is a moot question, but would there be any benefits if we were able to declare a state of emergency in terms of expediting the project or more funding?
I think based on our experience with working through, whether with FEMA or FHWA for emergency funds, staff doesn't see a benefit to declaring an emergency in order to expedite proposed plans for either a temporary path or some of the other items that were included in the August 12th council motion. So we believe adding another layer of an emergency order wouldn't necessarily expedite any of the actions that were being proposed today.
Okay, and we don't fit that definition, but I just wanted to, okay, I have one more question. So Mr. Crossley, you provided a slide that talked about the sequencing of the project. This is something that we've heard and I've heard a lot about is, why is it taking three years? Why not a mandatory every Saturday extended hours? Can you please walk us through, because this was something that I think, well, I'll speak for myself, that I was really interested in pushing for? And what I'm hearing from you and what I'm seeing from the slide is that it is not doable. Can you just walk us through step by step? Walk me through step by step, why?
Sure. I'll start by saying that we have a contract in place that says how many working days the contractor gets to do the job. It's about seven hundred, working from memory there. And so that sets the number of days that they have to work with, okay? It also says they can work Saturdays, which means that if they feel the need to, they can work Saturdays. It doesn't compel them to work every Saturday. So that's an important distinction to make if we get further into the discussion about directing them to work every Saturday from this point forward or for some other point forward in the future. We, we also know what that could cost, because there is a premium to work Saturdays. You know, they follow all the labor laws like everybody else, and so anytime you work a Saturday, you pay time and a half for those employees, double time on Sundays, per these bargaining agreements for the union contractors. And so the contractor is frankly incentivized to not work Saturdays if they don't need to. And so they, they do a pretty simple evaluation, which is to say, am I on track schedule-wise? And if they are, they, they wouldn't work a Saturday unless they needed to catch up or unless we directed them to. So let's just pause there. Because of the in-water work restrictions, if we started to work Saturdays unnecessarily at this point, you wouldn't finish the job any sooner, because you would just, kind of like speeding into a traffic jam, you would hit a point where you couldn't progress any further. And so we really need to think about how to get through this summer and next summer. That's a point where we could evaluate pricing out the cost to accelerate. That's the term we would use at that point, after we've cleared our two summers of in-water work, and understand what the opportunities are there to finish earlier than we otherwise would have with the number of contract days we have programmed into the project.
So, so I just want to make sure I'm following. So let's say we renegotiated the contract, and we said mandatory Saturday, and we somehow figured out how to pay for the overtime and address the costs. So let's say we did all that. We would still run into them not being able to progress because of the timing of the in-water work. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this.
They'd either run out of work, or to be candid, they might just go a little slower in other areas and take advantage of the fact that we're paying them to work Saturdays at our expense. So that's where things get a little bit murky, because the contractor ultimately can dictate the pace of their work based on the crew size and other things that they, they have control over, so.
But there is an opportunity to do the accelerated work after we're done with the in-water after summer of 2026, is what you're saying?
Yeah, that would be the time to revisit this, I think, and understand for, at what price, how many days could we finish sooner? That would be sort of the, the question we would pose to them and have them analyze through both their scheduler, and we have a scheduler on our team as well.
Okay, thank you. I did have another question, sorry. Okay, I think this one is for Mr. Starkey. You spoke about, let me look at my notes, oh, the two-way traffic in, in the single lane, and one of the pieces that you brought up is the safety concern around bicycle and pedestrian. If we were to move forward with Harbor Rail Bridge bicycle pedestrian path and bicycle pedestrians were using that, would that alleviate, there's a lot of ifs there, I understand, would that alleviate that concern for you and your team?
I think that would help alleviate the concern. We could feel more confident that we have a place, we've redirected pedestrians and bicyclists to go. I think that we would still have the sort of operational challenges within the work zone, because we'd still need to time it for bikes to be able to, to clear it, but we'd probably reduce the number of bikes that are using the area.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Brunner is recognized.
Thank you. If I could bring Kevin Crossley up, I had further questions on the Saturday work and the contract of seven hundred days. If you can, if Saturdays were in place every Saturday during our short window of permitted in-water work, and wouldn't we want to take advantage of the in-water work getting done?
Yes.
And so if, if the contractor, it sounds like, is saying they can do it without Saturdays?
They're monitoring their schedule, we're monitoring their schedule, they have what's called the critical path activity, which means this is the thing that has to happen to keep us on track. So they're constantly looking at that. If they're on track, they're financially disincentivized to work on a Saturday, because there's a premium cost coming out of their pocket. So they have a firm price to do the job within the amount of time that we've given them contractually. So we're doing that evaluation, they are, and most of the Saturdays so far, they've elected to work because they want to stay on track. And that's going to be the case, I think, through the rest of this season and probably through the rest of next season. After that, it's a question of, do we want them to finish sooner than they're contractually obligated to? At which place, that would be a negotiation we would have on them, what that price tag to finish some number of days sooner would look like.
So can you give examples of the work that is done outside of the in-water work?
Sure.
If they were to finish early on the in-water work, then what could they tackle?
There's a lot of land improvements associated with the project. We're building new retaining walls below the bridge, above the bridge on the west side of the harbor. There's quite a bit of utility relocation work with the water systems on both sides of the bridge. Those are all things that aren't seasonally dependent. Obviously, if it's, you know, raining, we don't want to be doing heavy excavation, but within reason, there's lots of stuff that can happen regardless of the time of year. Of course, there's also the work above the water surface and on the bridge deck, which does have a sequence they have to follow. Like I said earlier, they can't start building the deck out until they've got the things that hold the deck up finished. So there's a certain order that things have to happen in.
I think that, that helps answer, and I think, you know, these questions come from what, what we've heard from the community not visibly seeing work being done on, on the bridge and wanting this project to be expedited and to not take three years. So looking at options of getting this project and the overall timeline shrunk, what are some of those solutions?
Like I said, it would be talking to the contractor about what the price difference would be to reduce the number of working days basically that they have to finish the job. That would be the main one. We've talked with Caltrans and FHWA about whether there's an opportunity to do an early incentive where they finish early and get a bonus, basically. That's not, unfortunately not permitted, like a lot of things that would, would all that make this go more smoothly for everybody. But yeah, we're definitely interested in talking to them about accelerating once we clear these two major summer seasons that are in front of us.
Is that July 2026 approximately?
It would be October 2026. Yeah, that's when our next in-water window, permit window closes.
Okay.
We're also committed to working with the regulators to get time extensions on some of those permits. They're, they're open to extending those on a case-by-case basis. We were able to get an early start on one of our permits this summer, and we're hoping to do the same next season.
And so would you say all the other work is being done as much as possible in, in line with the sequencing outside of the in-water work?
Yeah, so far, everything's been positive with the contractor in terms of maintaining schedule. I mean, on a project of this complexity and scale, usually the discussion is why are they so far behind schedule? So in a way, it's a bit of an opportunity that we're able to talk about making them go even faster than they already are.
Yeah, we don't want them to maintain schedule. We want ahead of schedule. So that's what we're looking for. Okay, thank you.
Further questions, comments by members? Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you. One follow-up question for Mr. Crossley with regard to schedule, sorry. I just want to make sure I'm reconciling this, this data correctly. Is it fair to say that the full closure always coincides with in-water work or not?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so next summer, we have a sixty-day closure, which corresponds to three months, of which we have four months roughly, a four-and-a-half-month window to do in-water work. So the closures don't exactly align.
Okay.
And conversely, we have a seven-and-a-half-month closure that pushes beyond the limits of the first in-water work window.
Okay. I guess my, my question is around a perception, at least that I have, that the full closures seem to coincide with high business season. And are we obligated, like what is the obligation to have the full closures during that high business season? Is that because of the permit work in water?
Yeah, so, so for example, next summer, we're going to be moving that major pipeline onto the top of the bridge. It's currently under the harbor. So that's a major phase of work that's happening. That includes building a truss bridge for it, knocking down the barriers that keep the vehicles from going off the bridge currently, and then also starting to widen the deck. So we're packing a ton of work into that. One shorter closure next summer, and then also finishing pile driving on the south side of the bridge, which is the operation we're currently doing now. And you can see how much of the bridge deck is taken up by that, that phase of the work. So yeah, we've got a, a ton of work condensed into a pretty small amount of time, and it has to happen in the summer, unfortunately. The sewer force main work is also definitely a summer activity. That's when wastewater flows are at their lowest, so that minimizes the risk of inadvertent overflow.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really, it's just been an important discovery for me is that while the sequencing, like I have full confidence that you have worked out the sequencing to the maximum efficiency possible, truly, full confidence. The only thing that I had questions about with regard to the schedule was, why are we obligated to have the full closures during the highest business season? That felt like that was not necessarily answered in the staff report. I think I'm hearing you say that the sewer force main has to happen because of low flows. So that, that's, that's, makes a lot of sense to me. The current closure that's happening during the summer months, where we're seeing businesses reach out with impacts, is that because of the in-water work and the permits associated with the in-water work?
Yes, yeah. So we're actively pile driving, which is pushing those large diameter tubes over a hundred feet under the harbor floor.
And is that because summer season has appropriate tides, like what happens in water that requires us to work during the summer?
It has to do with steelhead migration in and out of Arana Creek.
Okay, so we are obligated by virtue of our permit, environmental sustainability, habitat sustainability, all of those things that we value as.
Yeah, U.S. and state fish and wildlife permits, as well as a NOAA permit, all have the same language written into it.
Okay, thank you.
The Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you. I have a question from Ms. Unit. I'm just looking at my notes. You've mentioned that there is individualized consulting available for businesses. Is that, how is that initiated?
Yeah, I would welcome an email to me directly or a phone call. We can meet with the businesses, talk through their needs, or also if they're looking for more technical assistance, business consulting, making a referral to the Small Business Development Center.
Have we or can we flip it, where we're notifying the businesses in the Seabright area that this is available, and then an invitation to reach out? Thank you.
Further questions of staff? Members of the public who wish to testify on this item, this would be your opportunity to do so. In the event that we have folks who are both here and online, we'll toggle back and forth, but we'll start with Mr. Speta for it. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Okay, so that whole thing, that whole thing just really blew my mind. I mean, marketing, we haven't heard anything from marketing. Did you say we've got fifty, fifty-two thousand hours of labor already and forty guys working a day? That's forty of, this room has forty people there. I, I was challenged last time I was here, when I heard that you guys worked thirteen of the past seventeen Saturdays. You guys did not work the twenty-sixth. You guys have not worked, last weekend was the first Saturday you've worked since the twen, I was gone two-middles in July. You didn't work before I came here in, when I came here and spoke in June. I mean, you guys. I mean, you guys aren't working on Saturdays and 40 people? I go down there every day. I was challenged last time I was here, and I go down there every day, and I see how many people are working down there. See what time it is right now? It's 4:45 almost. Every day for the past two weeks, they're gone, they're off-site. There was one day that they had a meeting and they left at 4:10. There was another day on the 13th, the two guys were drilling a hole in the cement pier. That's it. These guys are gone by 4 o'clock. We're losing our businesses. I have a challenge for you. It's going to cost me $60,000 to make it through the next two years, hopefully out of my pocket, right? You guys need to come up with $600,000 to pay for overtime because it's going to cost $8,000 a week to pay for overtime for these guys to work Saturdays until 6 o'clock every day. These guys are the only guys that are done by 4 o'clock, and we're like panicking, trying to get things done. And I go down there every day and I start noticing, you guys are done? I'm talking to people at the boatyard, oh, they're done by 3. I've been complaining about this since March, right? I've been coming down here every month, every two weeks, and complaining that these guys got to get this stuff done. 40 people working? Are you serious? They all park out in front of my store at Seabright. You can walk that track every day. There's two guys in the hole, there's two or three guys up on the bridge, there's a couple of guys down on the supply thing, maybe there's a couple of guys working on the pier on the other side. That's 400, that's 52,000 hours, if that's what he, she, he said, she's a stenographer. If he said that's 433 hours a day that they're, that they're supposed to be working, it's just, it's unbelievable. We haven't had any marketing help? We've been talking about this since March. That's it.
Do we have someone online? No, we don't. Anyone else wish to testify on this matter?
I apologize before, I thought that something else was going on. I've been riding my bike a lot, so whistling is better than me singing. I took a fair amount of notes on this. I actually configured, if you were to use inch and an eighth plywood to go across a distance of one mile, only 41 units, 32 a unit, seven pieces of two-by-six on each side, so only 5,168. That's a pretty much a seven-foot, six-inch wide space that goes over the tracks for a mile. I don't think it's even a mile. Now, I'm not quite sure what to title this, but I wrote down how to avoid even more lawsuits, where some of you sound smarter the less that you say. It's amazing that those two items, 15 and 16, went through in less than four minutes. So if you were to pay, let's say there's 20 businesses, you were to pay those businesses just $10,000 a month for their losses over 30 months, it's only $6 million. I think this is the 13th of 15 reasons to sue this metocratic city, or $250 million. So that's 1/40 of that amount. That doesn't change the access and all the other inconveniences for people. You know, I took some time to do some other thoughts. Gravity flow out of a 24-inch pipe is between 3,000 and 4,000 gallons a minute, which is 240, 180,000 to 240 gallons an hour. You know, professionally, as a multi-trade builder, I only really worked and commuted 32 years. I've spent over 2,000, probably over 3,000 hours specifically doing welding work. None of that stuff is rockin' science, I can do it. So there's, I want to look at my notes. As far as the men working on Saturdays, are you working to live or living to work? All those men have families. I don't mean to be specifically critical of anything that I've observed. I've never observed 40 people there, but I have observed them being gone by 4 most of the time, and that's at least 10 observations. Uh, this is just, you know, the businesses that are losing money, they really should figure out what's going on, along with hundreds of businesses that were destroyed during this scamdemic. You mentioned that this came in in 1993, that's the same year as the Seeds Project. That's all Agenda 21 crap. Only carbon that's trying to be reduced are the plants and the humans. Anyway, thanks, I would have loved to have talked on those other subjects.
We'll take the person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Hello, hello, council. I was there earlier at the public comment section. It's Brad Snyder. I wanted to say that I liked the part about how you were going to explore, you know, more robust transit options. You know, I think that's a good remedy, you know, or relief for some of the anxiety people have, if they could just easily hop on some shuttle that's, you know, inexpensive or free. You know, the idea that people can get across the harbor on, you know, on the shuttle, the harbor shuttle, an actual boat that goes across the harbor. In some ways, that's a reason to go there, even if you, you know, you wouldn't otherwise. You know, it's like a, it's an opportunity for people to go to a very nice part of the city, you know, which is the harbor. So, you know, as far as, you know, a shuttle, yeah, it seems like kind of a no-brainer if you would, you know, if you would take people from, you know, Seabright and Murray to, to, you know, by the harbor via 7th and SoCal Drive, and then down Seabright. Seems like it would be, you know, a lot of people would utilize that, and a lot of people would enjoy that. So I hope you guys are thinking along those lines, and thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome to the council meeting.
Good afternoon, council members and staff. I'm Solidine Sale. My family's lived on the west side for 20 years and in Santa Cruz County for nearly 60. We've patronized Seabright and Harbor businesses for that entire time. It's clear a number of those businesses are suffering during the current bridge closure and are deserving of special support. Running a small business is challenging in the best of times, and perceived risks to economic survival generate strong emotions. As council members, you're likely to be on the receiving end of those strong emotions, even as you struggle to select those actions that are achievable in the short term, legal and actually likely to substantially increase revenue for struggling businesses. Among actions proposed by staff for consideration, a number are immediately actionable and likely to produce actual benefits during the period until traffic resumes on the bridge in six months, beginning with enhanced transit and water taxi service. In the United States, obtaining quick consent from a railroad for a snap conversion of a rail bridge to bike and pedestrian usage is simply not going to happen. When Progressive Rail says they'll need to detailed engineering and safety plans, they're not asking for a simple letter that can be prepared in short order. Wishing it were not so, or raging against the perceived unfairness of needing their consent, won't make it otherwise. Instead of investing city time and resources in pursuit of a bridge project that's unlikely to succeed soon enough to help, I encourage the council to direct staff to develop a fast-track proposal to reintroduce the Tig M light rail vehicle as a temporary shuttle, initially between 7th Avenue and Seabright. This is easily and quickly achievable, will cost less, is already a permitted use of the rail line, and will bring immediate benefit to businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else online? We'll take the next person online, then Mr. Farrell will be right with you. We'll take a person online. Good afternoon, and welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, this is Brian Peakles with Trail Now. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. We absolutely need to move forward with converting the rail bridge into a trail. We've been recommending this for well over a decade, and thousands of miles across America are done, have been done. It's not a difficult process. It can be done in 10 weeks, and you don't need all of the required STB, FRA, federal rail baking, all of that done for this temporary trail. We recommended this, and Guy Preston actually recommended it to this council years ago. Unfortunately, this council failed to support the RTC executive director at the time, supporting Rory Campbell over the community. So here we are today, and we're asking you today to support the local community and deal with smart, cost-effective, and can be done. Don't allow the scare tactics by this Minnesota rail company. Their scare tactics, they're a paper tiger. They're not factual. We ask you to do a motion to the RTC to move forward with a simple rail trail, and the recommendation is either the interim trail that they're already planned, or the intermediate trail. And one correction on the intermediate trail, we truly want to pull up the rails and ties and just basically use the ballast and the gravel there already. Paving over the rails and ties is not as effective. That is not the proper way to do it. So again, we ask you to go forward with a motion, let's make up for the lost time that this council failed to do years ago, but let's, let's do the right thing for the community. Thank you.
Mr. Farrell, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Friends of the Rail and Trail. We want to congratulate the city and support your efforts. You're considering today to help the suffering businesses in the Seabright and Harbor neighborhoods. We support the strategies of marketing and communication, economic assistance that have been discussed today, including communications and outreach, and from my personal history, parking meter enforcement changes on Seabright Avenue. We strongly support the return of rail service, which city staff has presented as an option between Seabright and 7th Avenue. We believe it will serve more people than a temporary path, and it provides an all-weather option and more accessibility for the disabled and elderly. We are serious about supporting this option, and as happened with a demonstration project in 2021, Port would offer to contribute for the transport of a light rail vehicle like the Tig M to Santa Cruz City for the project. The attractiveness about the current proposed route from Seabright to 7th is that it would require no road crossings, so it'd be very easy to implement. But should this be determined to be attractive, and the council wished to pursue a further route to Capitol or the boardwalk, or even the west side, it would serve more people and would even more to help the Harbor area businesses. We urge council to direct staff to explore the rail transit option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Do we have anyone else online? We'll take the next person online, and then we'll take you in line in just a moment. Good afternoon, person online, welcome.
Thank you, RTC staff and county staff. There's a, I'm going to tell you how some of the regional transportation commissioners are actually working in ways that are, that are hurting the local business community that we're all here to talk about. After the rail corridor became publicly owned, a group of Southern California investors tried to buy it and then sued the RTC, using up taxpayer money and time, and they reformed afterwards as Greenway. And they've been telling people all these years that they can get you a trail on land they don't own and have no say in. At recent RTC meetings, one commissioner was completely unaware of the record-breaking rail grants that we, that, that we received. And another meeting, Monika Nick was saying, we have to take every possibility in, you know, into account, including boring a tunnel through our coastal soil. Well, Monika Nick is actually, he was a Greenway board member, got into politics, got himself on the RTC, and he works with the same agenda that, you know, that helps Greenway get to their goals. Recently, a local business owner was interviewed and complained that they may have to close their business in a month, and also that there aren't even buses that go down there. Well, you may be able to thank Monika Nick for that, because when Metro was required to give a, a long running list of insufficiencies and areas that are underfunded, and they, Metro, Perry Crews finally got the funding that they, that they were due, Monika Nick puts, put a motion to, forward to divert that to roads, after telling everybody, we don't need rail, we need buses. All right? So I don't think that Greenway funders are getting their money's worth.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Hi, my name is Joan, and I'm a Santa Cruz resident. I'm born and raised, so I'm super special. So right now, many of our small businesses in the Seabright and Harbor business districts are struggling, and surrounding communities are impacted as well. I ask that you look at rail service as part of the answer to this dilemma. Immediately, rail service is needed, and it would serve families, people with disabilities, workers, seniors, and tourists. And with tourists, it may even boost, you know, some of the businesses. Please direct staff to reinstate rail service between Seabright and 7th Avenue for the duration of the bridge project. The tracks are in place, it's permitted, there is, there are no crossings to consider. To me, it's the obvious solution. Thank you for considering, considering this option that helps businesses, residents, and the city of Santa Cruz. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online, Ms. Bush? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon, and welcome.
Hello, my name is Diane Dreyer, and I want to thank the council members, and also especially the staff for really drilling down deeply into how to help the businesses in the Seabright and 7th Avenue area, the Harbor area. I'm a frequent patron of some of those businesses, but I want to, I want to back up what several people have said about taking more seriously the possibility of having rail, light rail, ultra-light rail, go across the harbor and take anyone and everyone who would like to get across back and forth. It really makes accessibility for everyone, and that's important. So I think you've heard a lot of the many benefits of using the Coast Futura or Tig M, as it's also known, very light rail solution that I'd really be curious to know why that wouldn't be a first choice. Sounds like doing some kind of trail for walkers is not going to work, so very expensive. Anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Miles Corcoran. I've lived in Seabright since 1982 and other places in Santa Cruz before that. My office before I retired was on 7th, and I'd walk to work often over the tracks. over the tracks. I took my grandkids for a walk just a few weeks ago so we could see the big cranes. I am very much in favor of the light rail. We already have a very nice bike trail up in Irana that my family uses all the time. It's, it's pretty, it's beautiful. I don't see the need for another one a few feet away. We should really think about the train. As you've just heard other people who know more about it than me explain, it's already permitted. Fort is ready to pay to get one of these carriages brought to us. And I would really appreciate, you guys dive back in one more time on the train. I appreciate a lot of thinking has gone into this. In terms of the very simplest solution, which I'm sure is not legal or safe, just put some better handrails up and forget about it.
Thank you, sir. We have anyone else online? Mr. Brennan, good afternoon, sir, welcome.
I want to thank everyone here for recognizing that even though there may not be the technical legal definition of an emergency, this is an emergency for everybody in our city and especially for the businesses in Seabright. So we'll let the lawyers quibble about whether or not, you know, you guys can declare an emergency today. You certainly can declare an emergency for Seabright. But anyway, please don't fall down the rabbit hole that's happened here in the last half hour to 45 minutes about Greenway and train. This is not a discussion about Greenway. This is not really a discussion about the train. There is, that is a potential. But as we've heard or I've seen at least, it would take at least a year to a year and a half to pull that off. So what my comments to you today are threefold. First of all, with regard to the actual RTC action that will be coming up, I know Mayor Keely will be at that meeting. They've asked for you guys to come back in September. I believe it's at their first meeting in September. I would urge you to move forward and encourage RTC to move forward. I agree with the speaker earlier that was talking about the progressive rail is a paper tiger. They're putting roadblocks up. You just need to call their bluff and say, we're going to do this. You want to take us to court? Go ahead, try. I don't think you'll see them taking it to court. But bottom line is, is that I would encourage you to make a positive report to the RTC to move forward with getting the RTC bridge ready for pedestrians and for bicycles. Now let's talk about the measures once you get one-lane traffic open. So I heard a city staff, and city staff did a remarkable job on coming up with information and a report in such a short period of time. So everyone's dealing with this as a real emergency, even though it may not be a legal one. So I commend them for that. But, you know, first of all, he mentioned all these, you know, lights that stop people from going, when you just have one lane, so you use a stoplight. The idea that that's just, most of us have been founded on Highway One. He said it doesn't work as well when you're in an urban area. Well, it may not work as well, but you know, tell that to the businesses that they're, they're survival depends on being able to go both ways on that bridge. They'll take it not quite as well. And then the timeframe that was referenced, if we had to allow, would be 140 seconds. That's two, 10 minutes and 20 seconds interval. So that's way better than the 15 minutes extra it now takes to get around. So I, please, do what you can.
Thank you, sir. Do we have someone online? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon, person online, welcome to the city council meeting.
Hello, thanks for allowing me to speak. I'm, I fully support your support of the businesses in Seabright and the Harbor areas. I think they need that support and deserve it. I'm surprised to hear that there isn't a bus that goes down Seabright. That seems like a no-brainer and an easy help for them. And I fully support bringing something like the Coast Futura down as a shuttle because I think that more people will use that. People who ride their bikes tend to go around Irana Gulch anyway. And pedestrians, that is a little trickier, but they can get on a shuttle, which is always fun. And I also think that it could help with tourism because it's really fun to take a train to get around and be dropped off in places and hop back on and go to wherever your next destination or your car is parked. The one thing about, where I think a bus is really important is there isn't a lot of parking along Seabright. So somehow that needs to be mitigated and having bus service would help that a lot. And of course, the shuttle could go further east or further west if it's successful. And that'll bring even more people to the Seabright and Harbor areas. So that would be my, that's what I would hope that you would choose to do. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Ms. Boyle, good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here and taking this time. I would agree with my dear husband that I'm, it was very thorough staff reports. I have heard most of it before, but it was good to hear it again. One of the things we're representing here are 27 businesses, about 400 to 500 employees, $7 to $10 million annually in compensation. My business alone supplies more than $1 million in compensation for the people who work at my restaurant. Okay? So we are important, even though I feel as though our businesses were completely entirely ignored during the planning of this. As Renee said, we've known this was coming along for a long time. Yeah, we did. And all the discussion was about making it happen. None of the discussion, none of the discussion was about the businesses in Seabright, none of it. We heard about it February 14th. I wrote a letter. It took six weeks later until April 2nd before we had a meeting with the city. There was a prior meeting that the Harbor had, had asked for. And we were not allowed to ask questions and we were specifically told it was not our meeting. In any case, these are the things that I would like the city to do. Direct the city manager in whatever way possible to shorten the timeframe of this construction project. Once the bridge is reopened for single-lane traffic, make it enable two-way, two-way traffic. To make a rail bridge open to pedestrians and bicycles until the end of construction. Make it happen as fast as possible. I would ask the city manager to request federal community, community project funds for transportation from Representative Panetta's office. His staff has suggested they be contacted. To gather grandfather in the outdoor patios. Start planning now for the next closure that is going to be on Murray Street and infecting our, our businesses again, which is the rail trail program, which is in a few years, I don't know. Nathan knows exactly when that's supposed to happen. Give loans to whoever needs one, give grants to whoever needs one. Cancel the collection of local sales taxes. Have a marketing program that actually works. And please talk to us about the marketing. There's a whole list of marketing things that are supposedly happening and we haven't heard any of them. I found out by accident that the lookout thing was going on, but most of the other things, not. Banners, we were supposed to have banners, no banners. I propose, I don't know, better signage. The signage that is up is not adequate. I wish to say also that today, a number of people were not able to make it. They're, just like any other community, there are people who are busy and people who are sick and people who cannot get away from their small businesses. This shutdown has upended my life and the lives of all of the other people who are in Seabright. Not just the businesses, but really the businesses in a big, big way. Rather than just kind of having our own small, kind of regular 60-hour week, work weeks, you know, we're meeting extra, we're doing extra just to keep our businesses solvent, just to keep open. And I don't want you to take a wait-and-see attitude because it's just waiting to see who will next go out of business. When small businesses, I think I've written to you about this, when small businesses are faced with having to sign a new five-year lease in the next two years, they're going to be looking at that lease and saying, well, we know that two out of the five are going to be horrible. If Java Junction has been there for 35 years and they're losing $60,000, I guarantee you that there are other businesses that will be losing more and will not stay. Every business that closes in Seabright hurts all of us in Seabright. And to another extent, to a different extent, the city itself. I want the city of Santa Cruz to show respect for the small business community. Not talk down to us, not do things for us, ask us. The way you help people is to ask them what they need. And that is how we should be honored for our work. We put, we are, we establish and create and nurture community in this community. We're valuable members of this community. Thank you.
Do we have anyone online? Anyone else online? Good afternoon, sir, welcome.
My name is Mark Magdaleno. I'm the new owner of Seabright there at the Seabreeze Cafe Lindas. Been going to that place for years and my little kids grew up there. We've been going there for years. And then the opportunity came to buy it. So we were like, my wife's been in the restaurant business too for a long time. Her name's RCP Magdaleno. She was at Dela Viega Restaurant with her dad for over, probably her dad, 47 years up there. And very hard workers. I am a little worried, of course, you know, we've just been there a year, this past July. And I really think, I mean, it's a lot of work with you guys doing all that too, research. Been great, trying to figure out different ways for sure. I work for a contractor too, so I know all the meetings and all that other stuff that you guys have to go back and forth with scheduling. That is a tough job to do, but I know you guys can do it. I believe that you guys can do it. But yeah, I really liked what I heard when given this grandfathering in the patios, the parking there to help too. Some more people can go there and enjoy that area more. But yeah, I'd really like to be there for a lot longer. I did kind of lease there, you know, for five years, so I am worried. And so I'm hoping, I'm really hoping that you guys all come together or we all can come together and help each other with these times right now. I know it's not an easy project, but I think that if the planning works great and the hard work and just making sure that the contractor is doing what they're saying, then hopefully they'll get done earlier. That's my hope. Thank you for the time and thank you for all the information.
Thank you for investing in the community. Anyone else online? Good afternoon, welcome.
Hi there. Firstly, I really sympathize with the business owners. I was a business, small business owner for about 30 years. And my business at that time was on 41st Avenue. And there was a lot of construction with some new apartment, not apartments, excuse me, a motel. And we were impacted. So again, I definitely sympathize. I've always worked in the private sector. The, the Harbor and Seabright and surrounding neighborhoods are home to a vibrant mix of locally-owned businesses, cafes, restaurants, shops, and services that embody the unique character of the city. Please move forward with helping them by keeping the rail corridor in place. Use it as it is intended. Utilize light rail service ASAP. The rail corridor is one of our region's valuable public assets. It represents more than a right-of-way. It is a direct connection to our history, a viable framework for sustainable transit, and a critical piece of infrastructure. Once lost, it cannot be replaced. Safeguard the rail corridor for convert, for, from conversion or development. That would eliminate future rail use, protect the tracks. Doing so will demonstrate leadership, preserve our heritage, and deliver real benefits to the environment. Remember future generations and also currently remember right now the disabled community and people who would not be able to walk or ride a bike across if it was converted. And lastly, we're building a heck of a lot of new apartments and housing. And we really need more public transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome. Ms. Arnold, how are you today?
I'm doing great and I'm really impressed with everything that the staff has in mind to help the businesses around the Harbor. You have a really imaginative package of ideas here. I think a lot of them could really make a difference to our valued local businesses. I don't see how adding an additional pedestrian crossing is going to make much difference, though. If I heard correctly, you know, that some of the permitting wouldn't even happen until December. The, the bridge is going to open to pedestrians again in February. We've got the Irana Gulch path already for people who are moving by bikes. I think the Harbor businesses deserve more and they deserve rail transit. They, that other proposal to use the tracks by adding a shuttle like the Coast Futura would be much more useful. It would work in all kinds of weather for people who aren't comfortable walking that far. It would be an attraction in and of itself, sort of like the, the water taxi can be, bringing people to the neighborhood who might be otherwise avoiding it because of the current construction. You put a lot of detail into the trail proposal, you know, about different ways that could be done. And I urge you to give the same attention to the rail shuttle proposal. I don't think it's really wise to waste our money building a redundant trail. You could implement the other recommendations and investigate that idea of a rail shuttle and get that going as soon as possible. I think that will actually draw people who would not otherwise be coming to the Harbor. They really deserve, the businesses in the, in the Harbor area deserve a better solution. And I hope you will consider doing something more for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Good afternoon, welcome.
Rebecca Moore, Lower Seabright. I just want to make sure, maybe a couple of points, that you guys really understand how special Seabright and the Harbor are. My partner and I had my birthday dinner at La Posta a week ago and it was one of the best meals I've ever had in my life. All the businesses are very unique and very special. And I think there's an amazing opportunity with the trail. If you can build the pedestrian and bicycle trail to create this vibrant connector between these two very special places and keep these businesses afloat. How would you feel if on your watch, these businesses went down? These communities went down? The thing is, it is an emergency. And I know it's not a legal emergency, it's not an act of God, it's not a hurricane, it's not COVID. But it's a community emergency. And the thing is, you can solve it. This is a size that the city council of Santa Cruz, you can actually fix this. Most of these other emergencies you cannot fix. You can try to mitigate and you can help people be resilient, but you could actually solve this. I was very impressed by Matt Starkey's analysis of the four options for the trail. The intermediate trail is very cost-effective. I would probably personally prefer the interim trail, but I think you should do whatever is fastest. As you've got someone with a heart attack, they need open-heart surgery. What can fix this fast? You can fix this. I urge you to approve.
I urge you to approve the interim or the, interim or the intermediate, whichever is faster. You can do it, and you need to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else online? Or have anyone else in chambers who wish to testify to the matters back before the body? Councilmember Brunner.
I have a motion I'd like to make, and I just wanted to say thank you as well. Bonnie Bush should have the motion. Thank you to all of the comments and for everyone showing up to share your thoughts and input. Thank you to staff for directing, you know, last council meeting, we really directed this really fast, so thank you. So, even this morning, we, Vice Mayor and myself, Mayor, we've discussed, and so even this morning, we've continued to refine and add, and hearing everything that the businesses have shared with us, and thank you for bringing your concerns. We hear the significant impact, so I just want to say that, and we're taking this very seriously. So, we have a motion on the, on the...
Let me see. Do you make this motion?
I make this motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You may open on your motion.
So, we've heard about the upcoming three-year construction project in the Seabright and harbor area, and we've heard about the significant impacts, challenges to the businesses, the customers, the residents, the employees even. We recognize that the small businesses are the heartbeat of our community, absolutely, and we're committed, and I think this motion really stems from the input and the commitment to provide support to the businesses to navigate this period of disruption. And, you know, we've heard from many who are frustrated and stressed and are looking for a more detailed level of support and resources available, and a request for the city to be more proactive and comprehensive and laying out a clear plan of action regarding business support. And these business owners have invested a lot in the district and are feeling the impacts of the construction the hardest, which Public Works has done a lot of work, but, you know, this has come up, and we need to really work quickly to address this aspect of this construction project. It's a long-term major vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle improvement investment in our city's infrastructure, and this motion is a summary of the multifaceted support and resources based on input from the businesses and the community that we are directing to help ensure that these businesses remain in the area and are successful throughout the construction period and beyond. We've heard that loud and clear. And it includes financial assistance programs, for example, potential grants, marketing and promotional support. The city is funding, help support events in a, in a, in a way that is very clear and understandable. Operational and technical resources, transportation solutions. It's all here, and I just, you know, it's really intended to get us going, and the last part of this motion is to form an ad hoc committee and establish of three council members and appropriate staff to continue this Seabright and harbor business and resident coordination and support. This is not a one-and-done action here today. This will be ongoing. The city has assigned a point person we will be working closely with, and we hope to really continue and reevaluate as, as this project moves forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you. Councilmember Brunner, I want to confirm that the motion is also to accept staff recommendation, and this is in addition to that.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, to move the staff recommendation with the following additions.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the work of staff. You brought it two weeks before the direction we gave at the last council meeting, and clearly from the staff report and the presentation, a lot of work went into it, and I'm sure you had to put other projects aside, so I just want to acknowledge and thank you for that, and thank you for some of the innovative ways that you're, we're thinking about this. I appreciate staff laying out the considerations and challenges with, with some of these pieces, recognizing that Councilmember Brunner and I are not following staff recommendation on some of the items, and I just want to speak to that for a moment. You know, we heard from community members today and for the last several months, I think anything we can do that is within our reach to support the Seabright neighborhood, I mean, businesses and the neighborhood, I would say, I'm, I'm in support of trying to run it to ground. Acknowledging and recognizing that there are challenges and there are costs associated, and there will be roadblocks. So, so I think, you know, acknowledging that, I would like us to continue to move forward and to move forward with some of those items, like item 15 and item 14 that staff did not recommend that we pursue. So, that's sort of my thinking there, is let's just, let's try the options that could be before us. I don't think, and I've talked to some of the business owners, I don't think any one of these are silver bullet solutions. I don't think anybody thinks that, but I do think that they may, hopefully they will, contribute to resolving some of the challenges. A couple of the community members said that this is a community emergency, and I hear that, and I understand that, but I did want explicitly for myself and for the public to get the definition of a declaration of emergency, but we hear you, I hear you, speak for myself, I think we hear you, that this, this is a community emergency, and so this is why we have been working, it may not be visible, but we have been working quite diligently on this. Staff has been working quite diligently on this so that we can, again, move forward in every possible way that we can. So, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Further question and comment? Councilmember O'Hara is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to appreciate both of your work on this. I know this has been an incredibly challenging process. I want to appreciate staff. I, I am very aware of the impacts to staff on these types of urgent projects, and so I really appreciate you guys stepping up and, and coming up with such a thoughtful amount of data and reflection. I'm really struggling with, with this, and so I kind of want to go through a couple of my concerns. The first being, I believe emotional connection drives emergency patronage, not engineering. In a crisis, we've seen it time and time again, whether it's the CZU fires, whether it's the wharf, whether it's COVID. It's that emotional connection with the local businesses that drive patronage, not a traffic study. And so, I just want to talk about possibly increasing our thought, not increasing our thoughtfulness, increasing our considerations around what does marketing look like, because I think the most successful examples of business support during emergencies are driven by emotion, as I said. I think we need to strengthen the story of Seabright. We heard that from, and harbor businesses, we heard that from a couple of our speakers. People come out to Seabright because they love Seabright and the harbor. We need to talk about your stories. We need to remind residents what's at stake, and I think we need to consider a campaign that spots, spotlights the history, faces and flavors of the corridor, weekly business features, chef profiles, local legends, give people a reason to take the detour, right? People will be taking a detour for this. Let's invest in that storytelling. I think we lack real data on business impacts. We need data. From my perspective, I'm not actually sure I'm comfortable moving forward with these expensive projects without the data. No consistent baseline data was collected before construction began. We have it, we don't have it yet publicly available. Without this data, we can't evaluate what's working or design-targeted interventions that actually match the scale and type of harm. So, I would suggest before adopting complex or costly solutions, we need that foundational insight from the businesses themselves, direct interviews, survey instruments, revenue trends, et cetera. We need to talk to the businesses and understand this, and we know that sales tax data is delayed. There are interim things that we could be doing to have a better understanding of what's actually happening with the businesses. Challenges with revenue could possibly even be not, what am I trying to say here? Sales tax might actually not be the best measure because I'm sure businesses are already contracting. They're already tightening the belt, right? So, they're already probably doing their own cost-cutting measures. This motion does not cover this, but I think rail service policy conversations are a complete distraction, and I don't think we, they should be happening within the context of this, this discussion. I think when we speculate about rail planning, it completely eclipses the urgent local business recovery that needs our attention right now. We should just simply not be talking about the rail. Let me see, what else I want to say here? I think calls to accelerate the construction timeline, timeline ignore real risks. Rushing a complex infrastructure project is a recipe for failure and won't guarantee better outcomes for businesses. The bridge construction is governed by Caltrans timelines, environmental permitting, steelhead, you name it. These are external factors that require a very specific type of schedule. We trust our engineers. We have world-class engineers in our city. I'm in no position to say Saturday work has to happen or not happen. We, we have a schedule, we're sticking to it. Trying to accelerate it is going to cause problems, no doubt. Legal and safety risks of assuming the rail bridge liability. If the city opens up the rail bridge for, to pedestrians and cyclists, we may be also opening ourselves to unacceptable, unacceptable legal and financial exposure. The rail bridge was not designed, maintained, or structurally certified for regular pedestrian or cyclist use. If this city facilitates or endorses access, especially without proper engineering assessments, ADA compliance, and safety retrofits, it may assume liability for accidents, injuries, or deaths. Bridge access during construction creates unpredictable conflict points between the public and the construction equipment and vehicles, and just in large part, in very complex construction activities that are going on out there. And I also feel like this could set a very dangerous precedent where the city takes on private infrastructure risk without indemnification or transfer of ownership. There's also, you know, many different complex legal considerations for that. I'm not sure I'm comfortable taking on that risk. And ultimately, I believe a relief package is truly the only data-driven alternative. If we want a solution grounded in facts, it's direct relief, not guesswork. A well-designed relief package can be based on actual lost data, revenue documentation, and business self-reporting. This approach mirrors federal emergency support strategies and is both accountable and targeted, and it ensures equity. Support goes where it's needed most, not based on proximity or politics. So, I'm not sure what that all means in terms of the motion. I really have, I feel like there's some things on the motion that I agree with, and there's some things on the motion that I don't necessarily agree with.
Further debate or discussion? Councilmember Brunner.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Hara. I just wanted to tag on to your data, your, your business relief package comment, and I just wanted to remind that that is simultaneously being worked on. We currently did not have any such policy or program in place before this, and I, it became very clear, and, you know, that's one of the, the great things that has come out of this, is that we are developing, and I think November is when it's slated to come back, and that package of business support and during these types of impactful events, I think will be very important to set a framework for expectation and clear plan of what the city can support with. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that that simultaneously is happening, and we can get that going.
Further debate or discussion? Clerk will call the room.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
No.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passed and sworn in. Ms. Bush is for the business, come before the body. Mr. Gendotti for the business. Motion to adjourn to be in order. Councilmember Trigaro moves. Councilmember Holder seconds. Non-debatable. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Post motion carries. It's ordered to adjourn.